This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Call this meeting of the Eau Claire City Council with order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson, here. Beaton, here. Bergy, here. Christopherson, here. Emanuel, here. Gregert, here. Strobel, here. Well, here. Worthman, here. Jean.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to this Monday, October 22nd meeting of the Eau Claire City Council. Want to just say before we get started that all of the microphones, I believe, are down, except for the podium. And so, the setup that we have here is hopefully going to capture our dialogue, and if you could speak up and kind of be aware of that, we're going to try and do our best. But none of the mics here work and none of the mics for council members work at this time. We'll get started then, just want to say a few words about our Monday city council meetings. Our city council meetings on Monday are to hear public input and listening sessions, which give residents in our community a chance to weigh in on the important matters that the city council will take up at its 4:00 PM meeting tomorrow or in coming weeks. Want to welcome everyone again to council chambers this evening and thank Valley Media Works for doing their best considering our technology issues, but to make sure that this is live streamed to folks in the Chippewa Valley. You can find that at valleymediaworks.org or visit the government channel, which is 994 on Charterup Cable. And note that this is also simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. You can also find past meetings of the Eau Claire City Council on the YouTube channel for Valley Media Works. If you would like to address the council this evening, I want to just briefly review the protocol. Once I introduce an item, staff, or in some cases, council members, will present on that item, and following that, council may have additional questions to help clarify that issue. Then we will open the item for public input. Once that is opened, please come forward one at a time, and you can kind of line up at the wall here, but just be respectful and take your time, people will sort of make their way to the front. And please announce your name and address when you approach the podium, as that helps us keep track of everyone who's coming up here. We'll hold speaking turns to five minutes this evening. When the light turns red, you'll see this little light up here goes from green to red. When it turns red, that means the end of your five minutes is up, and I may ask you to wrap up your remarks if you go past. Please remain at the podium once you've said your piece, and oftentimes, council members may follow up and try and gain a little more insight or have clarifying questions of what you presented. Lastly, if you do not wish to speak this evening at the podium, you can still fill out a comment form, which is in the back of the room, and we get those then at our desks tomorrow. And the other way that you can contact us is please go to the city website, you can find all of our emails, all of our phone numbers as well, and you can communicate with us that way if you do not wish to either do the comment form or approach the podium. With that, I would like to open up our first order of business, which is a public hearing this evening regarding the street vacation from Mall Drive from Business, this is on south of Business Highway 53, north of the property line of Lot 1, CSM number 2602. We have Mr. Solberg this evening with details.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
Like mentioned, this is a public hearing on the resolution vacating a portion of the Mall Drive right-of-way. Here is an aerial, puts it a little bit better geographically than the map containing your packet, but here's Mall Drive, here's Hastings Way, Fairmont Avenue is to the north of the screen. Our mapping and mapping from previous projects for right-of-way limits had the right-of-way limit from Mall Drive being on this location here, a straight, uniform right-of-way, and then it went along the ramp for Hastings Way. The property owner for this parcel here was performing, having a CSM performed for on its parcel and discovered that the legal description for their lot and all of the recorded documents had the right-of-way line, the property line, on the left side of that hashed area. So they requested from the city, a partial vacation, and here's a little bit clearer view of that, requested the city to vacate officially that 15-foot strip of right-of-way so that the official recorded records match what are records that we had in our property maps with the city and make it consistent along Mall Drive. There are no public utilities located within that right-of-way, there is no transportation purpose for that right-of-way, therefore, city staff is supportive of the vacation. If there are any private utilities located in that area, they will retain their easements for occupying that area. But as far as public utilities and accompanying resolution tomorrow will be brought forward with the street vacation, resolution to remove the city's interest from that piece of land. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Then, are there any members of the public who wish to come forward this evening with their thoughts about the street vacation on Mall, on this portion of Mall Drive, south of Business 53? Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this? Okay, I don't see any at this time. We'll then go to our second business, second item on the agenda, which is public discussion around alley improvements. This is a public discussion on petitions received for alley improvement east of Russ Street, Gilbert Avenue to the north. Mr. Solberg.
So the next item centers around a petition that staff received, or two petitions, staff received for possible projects on an alley in the Third Ward. Your council packet contained a couple of pictures of the alley in question. Here's Gilbert Avenue, here's Russ Street, the alley goes from Gilbert Avenue to the north, there are four properties that abut the alley. Here is the street view of that alley, there's a concrete apron, and the alley is an aggregate surface back to the garages for these two properties. Here is a little bit closer scale of that. The alley is being used by these two property owners as their primary access for garage structures behind their buildings. They do not have access out to Russ Street for their garages and back. These two abutting properties have access off of Gilbert Avenue to their garages. The city received a petition for the improvement of the alley on September 28th, signed by the property owners of these two properties. A week later, the city received a petition from these two property owners requesting no improvement on the alley. Last year, in the alley program, we had petitions for two alleys on the west side of Eau Claire that were petitioned and accepted to be constructed, and there was some debate and some dissension among adjacent property owners that were not in favor of improving the alley. Therefore, with these competing petitions for this alley, we're presenting them to the city council for consideration of one of the petitions to either improve or not improve this alley. Just a brief history with the, the city has recently enacted a alley improvement program. We're in our fourth year of that. With that alley improvement program, we were tasked in public works at the time and engineering currently, in improving the overall condition of our alley throughout the city, whether it be in the Third Ward, West Side, East Side Hill, to a condition, an average condition of 50 or greater. At that time, our average condition of alleys were around 30, 20 to 30 if you average all of those together. So we've been methodically going through 10 to 15 alleys, sometimes 20 alleys a year, improving them with the new aggregate surface. Conditions that place an alley on our watch list to be included in the program are if it does have a non-paved surface that is being used, sometimes if they're petitioned for it, or if it's in a state of disrepair and people aren't able to use it even if it's not a gravel surface, but they petitioned for it, that happened last year. So this alley does meet several of the conditions that we would normally look at for alley improvements. We did not originally include it this year because our, we hadn't looked in the East Side Hill, but certainly in the future, in the upcoming years, this would have been an alley that we would have considered. It was just brought forward a little bit quicker with petitions. I don't take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Mr. Solberg, can you please point out the properties that are all affected by this again?
So there are these three properties here, and then the fourth property, the property line stops back here, and the alley does not continue onto this little corner for the lot to go, so it's four total.
So four total, okay. And then, maybe this is, I don't know if this is a question for you, I promise I'm not trying to yell, I'm trying to speak loud.
Oh.
Whereas Leslie Nope says, carrying loudly. So I'm carrying loudly right now. One of the letters against the alley improvement talks about that their homes together make up 67% of the land, so I guess...
That would be all of this side, and then a third of this side.
I see, okay. Thank you very much.
Further questions? Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Mr. Solberg, I know we corresponded the email a bit, but perhaps this information would be helpful for the whole council if that's related. I guess my question is, what is the estimated cost for the city as well as for the assessment of property owners in total? If this, I know it has to go out for bid, of course, too, to know, but I think you have an estimate.
Yes, so if this alley were constructed this year with bid prices, with our alleys that we had this year, and bid prices change from year to year, obviously, it would be approximately $9,000 to construct that alley, slightly higher if we had to add storm sewer to that. The storm sewer part of that is, you know, the stormwater utility. The average assessment for a lineal foot of frontage for a property owner on an alley next year will be around $11.50 per lineal foot. So with the frontage that we have on both sides of the alley going up, we would recoup about $3,100 of the construction cost of the alley from special assessments from the property owners. The remaining estimated $5,900 would be paid for by the general fund or would be paid for by the city residents as a whole towards that alley. I believe the letter had pointed, one of the letters, the counter petition towards improving it had indicated a lack of usage from these property owners towards paying for that, but it is the special assessments of all the adjacent property owners and the city's large pay for the overall alley improvement.
Further questions? Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to speak about this alley improvement? Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Julie Campbell, I live at 1329 Russ Street. We have submitted a petition to the city requesting that this alley be paved. My knowledge of this history goes beyond our owning the house. We bought the house in 2009 from my grandmother's estate, and because it was my grandmother's house, I have a longstanding history with the property, and there's been a lot of contention about the boundaries of the alley for many years. The purpose of the alley was originally created in the 1940s to grant access to three properties, their garages, so 1325 Rust, 1329 Rust, and 614 Gilbert. It's not there now, but once upon a time, there was a garage located here, I remember seeing it as a child. There's been a lot of contention about it, like I had said previously, 20 years ago, when this family moved in and they wanted to put a perimeter fence around their house, there was a lot of discussion about where that fence should be built. We recently have a new neighbor that lives here, but the previous owners wanted to build a larger garage, and they did not pursue that because they knew that it would meet with a lot of dissension from certain neighbors. And so we're hoping that paving it will take care of some of that dissension. We also want to be respectful of our neighbors. Troy and I live here, and there's specific two neighbors who are not appreciative of the gravel and the rocks from the alley being that migrate into their yards when we do our snow removal with us either shoveling or with the snow blower. So if that were paved, then that would solve that problem, it would make the removal a lot more easy, too, for the rest of us. My husband and Troy, I personally have two main complaints about the current condition of the alley. And first is that over the years, the driving pack has shifted west because the previous owners of 1325, in order to move into their driveway or into their garage, would veer left. And so you can see right here, this patch of gravel is not in the alleyway anymore, that is our personal property, and it's being used as a driveway. I have another view. We recently took some pictures, we staked out the boundaries of the alley. You can see the white tape line, and that is where the center of the alley should be in conjunction with the property. And then we've staked out eight feet on either side with orange plagues, and the 16-foot alley should be shifted to the east. Another reason for the migration of the alley is that we have certain neighbors who are planting garden boxes in the alleyway. You can see the orange plagues, and that is actually the edge of the allotted alley space. And again, there's the center line where the alley should be, and those garden boxes are creating a lot of issues. Also, their trees are overhanging by quite a bit into the alley space. You can see that one of our neighbors is building a garage, and he can't complete the project because the trees are in the way of the equipment. All of these factors make it very difficult for us to access our garage. And so, because the alley has shifted, and because of the crowding with the boxes and the trees that are plain planted, in order to get the right angle to get into my garage, I have to drive up against the bushes, which scratch the side of my car. And then, I don't even have the right angle to get into my garage properly. And then, this happened a few winters ago, there in crouching bushes are totally blocking our driveway, and we're trapped at home. So, we're hoping that paving the alley will make life a little easier in our neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell, for your testimony. Is there any questions from council about that? Thank you again, appreciate the pictures. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the alley petitions? Yeah, looking forward.
My name is David Congress, and I live...
Sir, come to the podium, just so I can, and at home, too, they can hear you, that too.
My name is David Congress, and I live at 1325 Rust. I just moved last year, and I'm the one that attempted to make the new garage. And when they're talking about the planning and everything, remember that a garage like that, the city is going to make a lot of money in taxes off of that. And so I'm just hoping, you know, that everything that Julia said, you'll be aware of it, you'll be aware of the problems that I've had this summer, and it's taken me all this time just to get this far, and I'm almost done. But this is the problem. So, appreciate tonight, and I'm just saying that I affirm, if we define it and we pave it, we'll never have this problem again. When I sell the house, the new owner will never have that problem either.
Thank you. We have a question, sir, we have a question from Councilmember Beaton.
Could you just point out your property so we can see on the map?
Let's see.
Is it, is it number three?
Yeah, and it's, it's... I'm trying to see how I can... Okay. Yeah, there it is. I mean, it's hard just to see it. It's so, it was an old garage that was way beyond its time, they couldn't even put a car in there. So, anyway, that...
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the one where it ends up at my place, thank you.
Does anyone else want to say a few words about this item, the alley, potential alley improvement? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that item and move to item number three on our agenda, which is a public discussion on an ordinance amending table nine of the city code of ordinance is entitled Parking During Specified Hours by Amending the Time Restrictions on Briggs Avenue. Mr. Solberg.
This item was originally before the council this summer, about two months ago, and it's centered around Briggs Avenue on the lower north side of Eau Claire. Briggs Avenue is right here, here's Western Avenue, Peebles here, and Tobin Street here. Seymour Road is just off the screen to the south. We received a petition this summer from property owners on Briggs Avenue in this area requesting parking restrictions be enacted on the east side of Briggs Avenue from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, for two hours, no Saturdays, no Sundays, and no holiday restrictions for that. Briggs Avenue is a narrow street, it's 30 feet wide from face to face. There is a business in this area here that has a large number of employees that, their employees park on Briggs Avenue because parking is at a premium in the area, and this is a safer location to park as opposed to out on Western Avenue where there's higher traffic, and Western Avenue is a little bit narrow for the volume of street traffic or truck traffic that you have, and there's no parking legally allowed on the frontage road due to space constraints with the width of the cross-section for that. So we had gone through a discussion of the reasoning behind the parking restriction being petitioned with centering around being a narrow street, having the vehicles parked there creates a very tight turning radius in and out of the driveways, as well as there was some concerns with snow removal and ice buildup in wintertime. During the discussion, it was mentioned by resident Briggs, wouldn't it be nice to have parking across the street where you see currently there are some cars parked in the aerial view that's before you? So after the discussion, I went and looked that night and roughed in a 40-foot, or a 40-stall parking lot in the land that's across the street from Briggs Avenue, looked at land up here, and this is, this vacant lot is affixed with this parcel, so this is really the only land to try and provide relief for necessary parking in the area with the employees who are parking on Tobin, parking over sidewalks, parking on Briggs Avenue, but the employees need a place to park. And the city council at the time tasked me with reaching out to DOT about a possible land transfer and bringing back this item at this date for possible action or update. So I have an update on where we are with this, and then that will lead into the discussion afterwards. I reached out to the DOT, even though the city of Eau Claire operates and maintains Hastings Way, the DOT owns the land underneath said highway. I reached out to them, and they were unable to quit claim with the recent policy that they have the land to the city of Eau Claire directly, but they did instruct me that if the property owner or the business owner were to contact them, they would work with the property owner or the business owner directly for a property transfer. So the DOT was agreeable to exploring that, but the city of Eau Claire would not be a party to that, it would be going directly from the state to the property or the business owner. I have reached out to the business owner, and they have made contact with the state. I'm not aware of the transfer of property taking effect yet, but it's my understanding that they are working through the process with that. So it's, the parking lot is in process, which brings us back to the discussion tonight that happened at the tail end of the discussion two months ago. Should those petitioned for restrictions on Briggs Avenue go into effect, you know, permanently? Should they wait and go into effect after, go into effect next summer if the parking lot is not constructed, or should they be enacted over, for a temporary period of time from now until the parking lot is constructed next summer to provide some relief for snow and ice removal? Along with the discussions two months ago were the exact configuration of the ordinance change for enforcement purposes and safety concerns. It was noted that it would be easier to enforce and increase safety concern, or safety improvement to have no parking from 7:00 to 4:00 along the driveway side of Briggs Avenue, which would be the west side, and then have no parking restrictions at all on the west side as, or the east side as currently exists, or enact them as petitioned with two-hour parking, 7:00 to 4:00 on the east side. With that, I will take any questions that I have, and the discussion can go on from there.
Any questions? No? Okay. Okay, Mr. Solberg. Are there any members of the public who wish to come and comment on what we heard this evening about the different options regarding parking along Briggs Avenue?
Good evening, Acting President Worthman, members of council, I'm Bruce King, I live at 1216 Briggs Avenue. Man, I like the looks of that, I'll tell you. When we discussed this with you a couple of months ago, I was hoping for something in a 20 to 25 stall lot, not 40, we'll take 40, believe me. If you were up there right now and you drive through there, not only is BMB Electric an extremely busy place, and Tobin is jam-full of cars, but there's construction going on at next door at XL Energy, they're doing paving, they're on the tail end of a huge construction project, so we've got cars, we've got trucks, we've got delivery trucks, and it becomes an extremely large hassle just to get through that area. With a 40-car parking lot that is off the road, and the way that you see it, there's two rows of pine trees, and those two rows of pine trees are right there, and I live here, my neighbor Tara Palmer lives here, so a one-way in, one-way out where you can, there's a curb cut right there that is currently existing there, when there used to be houses over here. To get 40 cars in there would take a tremendous load off Tobin, and probably would take it off a little bit off Western Avenue as well. You could move all of the vehicles... You could move all of the vehicles that B and B Electric currently parks in this empty lot here and along both sides of Tobin, you could get forty, those forty vehicles into this lot and keep them off Briggs Avenue. Right now we have about three of their employees that have been using parking on Briggs itself. As far as the hours go, it becomes a real mess not only with them parking in, on the street, but you know, with the neighbors down here, some of them have two and three vehicles. The other end of the street, we have a contractor that has a couple of vehicles and a couple of trailers. That takes up a very sharp corner down here and they're parked right on the end, which makes plumbing very challenging at best. So yeah, we're very much supportive of any effort to get this parking lot and get the traffic and the vehicles off the streets as much as possible. With that, any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So it sounds like the, there's some, some things that need to be happening between the state and the private business owner. Have you or your neighbors had any conversations with the business owner at all about this project?
I know my, my neighbor hasn't and I know they have been in contact with DOT and that's, I have not spoken with B and B. We just had the original petition to try to get some of that traffic relief off Briggs Avenue because the part of the street here that goes from about the Palmer's house right up to here, if you're looking at the street, the street slopes toward the houses like this and goes downhill. So in the, in the wintertime when there's snow and ice and it starts melting, that runs down basically right in front of our driveways and freeze thaw, freeze thaw. So I've got four inches of ice out there and if I got vehicles across the street from me and I'm trying to get out of my driveway, that's just a recipe for disaster. And same with the plow truck, they're trying to weave in in between vehicles even though the city's best efforts to do odd even, sometimes that just does not work and then you've got ridges and all sorts of problems for the rest of the winter.
Further questions? Because I have one. Oh, Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, I'll speak loud. So what we are voting on tomorrow night it sounds like is about the parking restrictions. And I was wondering, it looks like this is what you asked for originally, but just to make sure that your, and your neighbors that you know are fine with the two hour parking in seven AM and seven, or four PM on east side and then until November first, twenty nineteen. And that is what you are agreeable to?
Yeah, and we're, and we're hoping that B and B Electric and DOT can come to an agreement to get that lot. That would be an immense help in that entire two block area.
Reason of control over that part.
Right.
Thank you.
So, you are in favor of, because we heard some comments that folks thought it would be safer if it was west side, no parking? Or do you think east side is better?
Yeah, with a two hour restriction, they're not gonna be able to leave their cars there. If, that's fine for a transient employee that just comes in, gets what they need for the day and takes off again. The problem we've been having is they get there at five o'clock in the morning and they leave at five o'clock in the evening. And those, that line of cars goes all the way down Briggs Avenue and sometimes on both sides of Briggs Avenue. And with deliveries that come through there from semis, from other contractors, from FedEx, UPS, that makes a very dangerous situation on such a narrow street.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on the Briggs Avenue changes, potential changes that we're gonna be voting on tomorrow? For parking, seeing none? We will then move, oh, Mr. Silver, did you have anything to add to that?
I just got it.
We'll then move to item number four on our agenda this evening, which is regarding the keeping of honeybees. This is a public discussion on an ordinance amending chapter six point one four entitled Keeping of Honeybees of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Eau Claire. Ms. Stromberger?
Thank you. So there are a bunch of amendments to this one ordinance, so I'll just do a brief summary of them for you. The first is that this ordinance would change the license year from beginning in March to beginning with the calendar year. There would be changes made to neighbor consent. Currently, I believe neighbors in a surrounding area have to sign off on, you have to get eighty percent approval. This would provide notice to all neighbors within a hundred feet and then neighbors within fifty feet would have the right to object to a license being granted. And if an objection is received, the license would be presented to you as city council for consideration. And there'd be a large acre exception, properties larger than ten acres could have up to one colony per acre to a maximum of forty-nine colonies. Hives not under active management would have to be dismantled and removed. If a hive exhibits unusually aggressive characteristics, the hive has to be destroyed or re-queened. And then there was the addition of public space beekeeping. Beekeeping in that context would be permitted at the Kaiser property, Archery Park, Dunler Park, Fairfax Park and Jeffers Road Green Waste Site. And the ordinance sets requirements for beekeeping in those spaces. That hives in public spaces would have to be enclosed and secured against entry by the public. Prohibits storage of beekeeping equipment on public property. Hives would have to be at least fifty feet from a property line and seventy-five feet from any public amenity. Beekeepers at any public space location would be subject to an additional fee of twenty-five dollars and have to provide insurance to the city. And then locations, Community Garden Association would have the first chance at beekeeping in those spaces and would have to enter into a contract with the city to do so. So I can address any questions or the Health Department and Community Services are here as well.
Thank you. Other questions on this ordinance? Councilmember Strobel?
I have a question, I'm not sure. The, the notice to the neighbors, the one hundred foot notice that is now being put up there, is that just the first year and then after that there's no notice? Or is it, do you throw out that notice every year before you want?
It's an annual notice.
Pardon?
It's an annual notice assuming somebody wants to renew their license. Yep.
Further questions? Councilmember Wells?
Thank you, Acting President. In regards to the public spaces, is there a limit, number hives?
It would still be subject to the same acreage limit that any other property would be subject to, so-
Okay.
Depending on the size of the park.
Okay. Another question?
Yes.
The, the fees, how, how has that changed now? I know it was a forty-five dollar application fee before. Is there no longer a forty-five dollar application fee and then they're just paying?
There still is, so somebody who would wanna beekeep in a park would have that initial application fee and then the additional twenty-five dollar fee.
Per hive?
Per hive.
Okay.
And not having much experience with beekeeping is a box, one box that you see in a, is that a hive?
I believe so, I defer to the Health Department on that one.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. The acreage thing with all the hives, I was trying to figure out how many homes in the city of Eau Claire have ten acres? Are there actually any single family homes that are on ten acres in the city of Eau Claire or is that just mainly meant for parking?
That exception is, so one, one part of it that I didn't mention is that it includes any continuous properties under the same ownership. And we do have situations like that. I don't know if there are any ten acre residential properties or otherwise in the city. But there are parcels where the same owner owns several that add up to a large, larger number and people may want to beekeep on those locations.
Can I ask a question? I'm not quite sure. Maybe, maybe it'll be tomorrow's discussion where someone could chime in on it, but what, what do the beekeepers do with the honey? Does anybody know that?
I defer to the Health Department on that one or potentially-
And I can ask it tomorrow.
Councilmember Worthman.
I'll defer. Yeah, I'll defer to that.
I'm Matt Steinbach with the Health Department. Most of the license holders that we have in the city use it for personal use, for family, friends, honey that they produce, they use for their own use.
And so if they have ten hives or forty-two hives, that, forty-five hives or whatever, that's a lot more hives we're talking about now? I mean, is that reasonable to expect it to be just for personal use? I guess that's a-
That's a good question. There are regulations on agricultural pursuits when they get to be a large number of colonies. So there are regulations on the distribution of honey as a food.
Thank you. Councilmember Strobel, I'll add to that too, most of the applicants are gonna be likely single family or, or smaller lot sizes, so there's never gonna be more than two or four hives. There's gonna be a few exceptions probably in the city where it's beyond that. And one of the, one of the potential applicants is the tech college who is, you know, has a bigger parcel of land and would like to teach classes around beekeeping. And so that's, you know, those are likely to be few and far between where you have more than two or four, two, three or four hives. I even think in like a community garden setting or forestry, it's probably gonna be two hives, so. And I know that most, as Matt said, most use is gonna be either for personal or people give it away to their neighbors or their friends, family, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember Wells?
Thank you, Acting President. Was there, was there a reason that generated this change? Was, was it getting difficult to get the eighty percent within the adjacent to surrounding areas?
That particular change was actually requested by Acting President Worthman, so I'll defer to him on that.
The, the changes that you see, there's a number of changes that came from different places, but there were a number of beekeepers that came together to inform these changes and work with the Health Department and Ms. Stromberger. The one regarding the hundred foot requirement for neighbor, neighbor consent, that ends up, for example, on the east hill, typical home, when, within a hundred feet of the property you could have fourteen other properties, sometimes they're two and three homes away. And it was eighty percent of those had to say yes. Oftentimes there's someone who's out of town or someone, in my case, I had a resident who actually owned two homes, well... There were a number of people who just wouldn't come to the door, those kinds of things. So it became increasingly difficult and considering it's so far away, the, the concept of this is to, to say, look, you know, speak with your neighbors, let them know that you're gonna be doing this and if they wanna object because there's a health reason, then that seems reasonable, but otherwise, percent within a hundred feet is a pretty high bar. Some of these other changes are coming from the beekeeping, some of the beekeeping is, the Chippewa Valley beekeepers and some of the other changes are being requested by the tech college as well to help with the class that they're trying to do. So, did that answer your question?
Yeah, somewhat.
There, all the changes are coming from, from different folks, but they're, they were all worked on together with the Health Department?
The only experience I have with it is on the real estate side of it, obviously selling homes and concerns that people have. And, and I've, I've actually sold homes to people that want and raised bees and have gone through the process and, you know, filled out the application and went and visited the neighbors and it was, worked out really well. And they, you know, they're raising bees and loving it. So I just was just wondering why, you know, why it's changed. I see it's changed from what used to be the property lines now the dwelling as far as measuring the distance. So that obviously tightens it up as well, a little closer proximity now for those hives and so on. But the other question I had in regards to in the event that somebody within the fifty feet objects, stated that it would come to us as the council, as a body, is that right? To hear the objection and weigh a decision, is that, is that right?
I believe that's correct.
Is there a criteria that, that will follow to take that from being subjective to objective when we, when we make those decisions on whether or not that's approved or?
I'll defer to Ms. Stromberger for the question.
We would have to create that criteria and certainly that's something we can come up with, a list of factors for you to consider, just like we would for, for an alcohol license or something like that, but it's city council discretion. There, there's not a, a set list of things to, to make it entirely objective.
Thank you. Councilmember Strobel?
Just have one more question. And, and it kinda gets to Councilmember Wells' question. It's, do people have a problem getting a beekeeping license with the existing restrictions that we had on there? And is that what brought this forward or did they, was there people that, was there anybody that, that wanted to have a bee hive that couldn't have a bee hive or something?
I'll, I'll take that. I mean, it, it just was, for the people that were keeping bees, it was a high bar. And so oftentimes, trying to get, if you have twelve neighbors and you have to get signed off out of fourteen, you have to go around multiple nights, night after night, figuring out who's there, who's not. In, in the case, in my case, I had vacant, some people that were out of town. I had another gentleman who just wouldn't come to the door, he owned two properties. It just became really difficult to try to get to that number. And I, I believe it was, it used to be that you had to go around yearly, correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that was the other thing is each time you applied and whereas that wouldn't apply anymore. But it just, the, when you think about it, there's bees throughout an entire community. If you're going and asking a neighbor who's three doors down, you know, it, it's just not as relevant. Whereas the next door neighbor, if there's a health issue, they're the ones who are gonna be probably most impacted. And so that's what this process of being able to object tries to get at is if someone says, I'm allergic and I can't have them next to me, then that's a clear indicator that we have to, you know, consider, so. Further questions? Seeing none. Thank you. And thanks for your work on this as well. Are there members of the public this evening who would like to speak on the changes to our beekeeping ordinance this evening? Anyone like to speak? Seeing none. At this time, we will move on then to item number five, penalties for traffic violations. This is a public discussion on an ordinance amending section ten forty-four oh seven oh entitled Late Payment Penalty of the City Code of Ordinances, related to penalties for traffic violations. Ms. Stromberger?
Thank you. This ordinance amendment does not actually result in any operational changes. It just brings the ordinance into line with current practice and the existing fees and licenses schedule. So the penalties will be and currently are by practice, should the ordinance pass, a five dollar penalty after ten days, a post issuance of a parking ticket, ten dollars after twenty days and ten dollars after thirty days.
Thank you. Questions? Oh, Councilmember Wells?
Thank you, Acting President.
Is there a reason why we do so?
So it's not actually a reason, current practice is to do the five dollar penalty after ten days. Somehow there was an administrative error made in the code. It says that it's ten dollars after ten days, but that's never been the penalty that's been imposed, it's always been five dollars.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Thank you.
Further clarification? Seeing none? Thank you, Ms. Stromberger. Are there members of the public who wish to speak about this change in our parking, our traffic violations, late payment penalties? Anyone here to speak on this? Seeing none at this time. We will move then to item number six, which is a public discussion on an amendment to the City of Eau Claire's for public officials to include guidelines for resident public forums at Monday city council meetings. This evening we will have Councilmember Bergy fill us in on this item.
Do you want to open from here, does that work?
Um, actually, if you could come up here just so that people can hear it better at home. home.
Get to try out the podium. It's a nice view. So yes, tomorrow night, we'll be voting on the resident, uh, public forum, and just, um, just kind of go over a little bit why I think that we can, and why I wanted to bring this forward, and I asked Councilmember Christofferson if she would partner with me, and she'd said yes. Um, basically, this option would add another option, for I know we have some, um, options right now for people to get ahold of their council members through email or phone call. I feel like though this added option of someone coming before council and talking to them as a body in person adds another option for people, it just makes it more accessible for everyone. There's been a community conversation recently of poverty in our community as well as homelessness, and some, not everyone has, uh, access to phone or internet, and maybe they have access to phone, but they needed the internet to look up their council number or phone numbers. So this just gives another option for people who may not have, um, all the other, um, what a phone or email. I also think that this will make it easier for people to be heard. Currently, there is a public hearing on certain items that are mandated by law, or if, uh, like, the council president would like a public hearing, or Mr. City Manager would, or if anyone that's bringing a motion forward is asking for one. But that's pretty restrictive in my view. Um, it also makes it confusing for people to know when they can speak on things. I've heard personally and I've seen people come on a Monday night hoping that they could speak to something, only to find out that they could not speak and had to leave. This kind of brings me to my next, uh, reason why I think we need this, is I think it builds trust between residents and their city having this, uh, opportunity. I hear and I've heard that people are frustrated, that they don't feel heard, and I know the city does care about their residents, I know I do, but that's, there is still a perception out there that I think that this can help, um, minimize. So just allowing people the opportunity to come before their body, I think is very important with building that trust. I think people do want to come before their body and speak to their people that they elected, and to share their thoughts and ideas. So, these are the reasons why I wanted to bring this forward, um, and why I wanted to have a standing public comment period, but I was also flexible on the details. I know it's important to have parameters and boundaries, um, and I think, and I do think that's very important, but I was flexible on those parts. So we had a pre-legislative discussion, and we talked about all these, uh, with people that were there, and then the Mr. City Attorney was able to put everything together, and that is what's before you, um, right now, what we'll be voting on tomorrow. So, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Bergy.
You're welcome.
Is there further, um, does Councilmember Christofferson have something to add to that as well? Okay. Uh, do councilmembers have questions or clarification about this item or, and/or what we're voting on tomorrow for Councilmember Bergy? No? Oh, actually, yes. Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Acting President. Um, I don't know if this is a good question for you, Councilmember Bergy, um, and also before I ask my question, thank you so much to you and Councilmember Ms. Stromberger for providing the leadership. Um, I think the words build trust are an important part of public, um, work and leadership, so thank you very much for offering us an opportunity to deliberate that tomorrow. This is really kind of like a procedural question or a logistical question, so under bullet number two, it says, "Those wishing to comment during the resident public forum may sign up prior to the session with a name, da-da-da-da-da, and shall either in the sign-up sheet or at the podium prior to speaking identify themselves." So what happens if somebody, I guess, does everybody have to sign up if they want to speak, and if they don't sign up, can they not speak? And if they don't put their address, if they put their address on the piece of paper, do they still have to say it in public? So, I don't know if, kind of those operational details maybe have, um, if you could share some, or if it's passed, we can just see what happens.
Well, I mean, I'd say my thoughts are on that, but I agree, we can just kind of see how it goes in a spirit of flexibility, but, um, I think people signing in, and then if, uh, you know, council president or acting president goes by that, but if there's still time, the twenty-minute period, and people still want to come up and speak, they would still be welcomed. So you wouldn't be turned away if you got here two minutes late and weren't able to sign in, um, you just, it's a priority thing, is the way I look at it, but I'm not sure if that's written that way, you know, it's kind of, so.
That helps, Councilmember?
If I may follow up, um, it looked like maybe the city attorney might want to share something.
Happy to, yeah, asking me, uh, I, I think it is written that way. It, it, so it says may, you know, so it's just, uh, permissive, uh, based on, right, council protocol at the time, because we're up to now, we haven't had a sign-up sheet, but it just says, "You may use that," or "They may sign up," but I think, I completely agree with what Councilmember Bergy said, if you show up, you know, two minutes into the session and you didn't see the sign-up sheet, or you just didn't sign up, then in the alternative, all it's saying is at the podium, then you need to step up and just follow our current protocol, which is state your name, say where you live, and confirm you're a resident.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, uh, otherwise, if you sign in, you know, you don't have to do that, the council president can, you know, choose to ask a name again, but, um, if they, everybody has signed in and kind of just says, "Yep, you know, here I am, and I'm one-two-three Main Street, Eau Claire resident, yep," you don't have to repeat that at the podium. So it, it's allowing that flexibility to go either way.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Strobel, you got a question?
I, I, I probably have a lot of questions, but I'd probably save a lot of them for a discussion tomorrow evening. Um, uh, one of the clarifications, if I could, just on this last point, um, the, if they sign up on the sheet, they're still going to identify their name and address when they get to the podium? Or do you'll just have a...
No, they have the, they have that option, but they don't have...
Will the councilmembers know their name and address?
Well, I would think you could ask.
I believe the clerk, if you ask them, how would you do that? I'm not sure. Yeah.
Yeah, again, it's, sorry.
Yeah.
You okay? It, it's not meant to be a, a confusing, it, it says either-or, and so, our current practice certainly is that, that people step to the podium, state their names, state their address, and this allows that same practice to go forward, it just also adds a sign-in process that is an option.
Okay, that's a clarification I wanted to give, is they, they sign in, but they're still going to state their name and address at the podium. That's a clarification I was asking.
Yep, they can.
I think you could either way, isn't it, Martin?
And, um, I mean, you mentioned in, in the first part of your, your talk here about homeless people, how are they going to do that?
Probably they sign in. Well, it's where they slept, I mean, that question, you know, when people, homeless people register to vote, and they have to put their address down, they can just put down, I mean, it's sad, but, you know, under the bridge or, I mean, it's really sad, but that's what they, when they have to register to vote, that's what they put down, so they could say that, or they could say they're homeless if they want, or...
Or just say, "Eau Claire."
Yeah.
Yeah, just a little more.
That's a good question.
Further questions from council? Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Acting President. Um, just one more question for tonight. I see that the sequencing of the session would be slated at the end of the public, um, other public hearing or discussion items. I'll save any commentary for that, but is there any reason why that was loaded there or kind of flexible on where that?
Yeah, that was one of the, to be honest, I was thinking at the beginning, because of, that's how I've seen it other ways, but I'm just, um, I'm flexible on that, and that's what, um, the Mr. City Attorney and, um, so, came up with, yeah.
City Attorney?
So the, the primary reason, I shared that in an email with Councilmember Christofferson and Bergy, is, uh, to try, to avoid the, the double presentation issue. So, uh, you have to, by putting it at the end, uh, and indicating as that bullet point does, that you don't, uh, speak on something that is otherwise noticed earlier in the agenda, is to avoid the, the repeat or the reprise of something, uh, that was talked about earlier. So, you notice something, I mean, again, just take any, you know, our current, you know, agenda item, someone shows up and, and speaks about the alley improvement, uh, issue, you know, those folks have left. So, they had an opportunity to speak on it on Agenda Item Two, uh, so you, you have, again, kind of two issues there. One, it can double up your agenda time, so, uh, if people feel strongly about it, they could stay, if you don't have that restriction of saying that, you know, they, they can't speak twice on it. And then the other problem is, is the, uh, open meetings law notice issue. So, you see on the agenda that, oh, there's an alley improvement, I'm going to show up for that, but once that item is done, typically folks leave, right? Uh, and, uh, so what you're trying to, to do is not have it, uh, reprised again, or, uh, if you put it up front, um, that they speak on it then, and then, uh, double up and speak on, uh, the issue again later. So, uh, one, it's just to not double up on your time, and then two, so what you do notice on the agenda actually means something, and people can count on it, that this is the time when this agenda item will be talked about, uh, and it's, you know, the only time. But that, that's the concept of it.
Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. My understanding of the handbook is that, uh, at this current time, residents can speak about an item once in totality of the meeting, regardless of if we had this, and only may they speak on it twice if they have permission from the chair and/or the body, if, you know, depending on how that goes. So, um, it seems that it's not according to our council rules, we wouldn't allow that. Does that, you know, may I ask the...
Sure.
...city attorney if that seems like a correct interpretation?
So, um, it is a correct statement of what our handbook says about, you know, current comments, uh, under noticed agenda items, uh, but, one, it, uh, even that statement says that you are allowed to repeat if permitted by the chair, and that has been recent practice, that, that has been, uh, made more accessible, that, that second comment. And then that's, of course, just about what we're doing now, you know, it's not about a public comment. And the final point is that, that just addresses one of the two prongs of the issues I raised, you know, so it doesn't deal with the, um, I anticipate that, uh, my agenda item will be talked about when it's noticed and not when it's not noticed, not during a, um, you know, a general public comment. And there are other ways to get at that, you know, I mean, you can do other regs that, you know, but, um, it's, um, whether, whether you want to hear the reprised issue is more of a policy choice. Um, making sure that the public knows when their item is going to be talked about and when it then won't be talked about is actually more of, is a statutory issue, because I think it, it's contrary to the open meeting law concept of notice of when your item's going to be talked about, to specifically list it, but then also let it be talked about at some other time, because I think that, again, that would, I think we would all agree, at least it's my opinion legally, that it's unfair to have some, again, just sticking with that alley improvement idea, um, have someone either show up a little later in the agenda because they, they only show up for their noticed item, and then not realize that either up front or at the end, it was also talked about, uh, under an open comment period. So, tho- those are the two prongs of issues, um, so, the, the issue that you referenced in the handbook, um, you know, addresses one of those.
Further questions? Councilmember Bergy, City Attorney, Councilmember Strobel?
Just one more, so I can mount on it overnight, um, and I, and I listened to your introduction, um, but I'm, I'm still trying to get to, what specific problems are we trying to address with this? Like, are there specific problems we're trying to address, or is it more of a, um, maybe not a problem, just, just that we...
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
Well, it's probably both, because I do think there are problems, again, I've heard, um, people, and I've seen people show up and thinking that they could speak, and they can't, and they go home. So I think that's an inconvenience, and again, I think it goes, and they leave feeling dissatisfied and frustrated, so that's one problem I've seen. I've seen, just, um, to my point of making it more easy, I, I feel like there's confusion out there, and if you are connected to the city, if you work with the city, if your spouse works for the city, if you're best friends with someone in the city, you know these things. There's a lot of people that don't have those connections, and they don't really know how it works. Um, and so there's confusion as to, like, a lot of people don't know that we have two meetings, you know, and one, one night's for public and one's not. So I'm trying to make it easier for people to be involved, and I feel like this will make that happen. Um, and again, I, I've seen this play out, um, before I was on council, people had concerns, and they didn't know how to get those concerns across to their, um, city. Yeah, you look confused, but that's just where people are at. They, they're not, they're busy, they, if they don't have connections with the city, they don't know, and they're, um, people that should have known probably didn't let them know, but, um, they, I saw people struggling. So I, I did have seen problems with that, and then because fixing the problem, I see as fixing the problem will also make, it, it will be changed, so, I guess, yeah, it will change the way we do things. But my whole point in bringing this forward isn't to make a big change, and that's not the reason why I'm bringing this forward. When I was in grad school, I was thinking about this.
Councilmember Bergy, actually, if, if the que- the dialogue that we're having this evening is probably best for tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
Um, so if I, if I could just, I apologize to Congress, but if I could just, both for Councilmember Strobel and for you, if it could be kind of clarifications on what's being presented this evening?
Okay.
Sorry. Councilmember Wells?
Thank you, Acting President. There was a discussion or a question, actually, in a work study or a work session, um, about follow-up, and who would be responsible for seeing whatever issues were, were brought before us to the next step? Was that talked about, or is that something that maybe we'll talk about tomorrow, or is that something that you have an idea about?
Well, should I answer, then you stop me if I'm, but, um, I have, from our discussion, I don't think there's any expectation of city staff, even though I know that they might feel, because our city staff are very excellent, and they feel, they want people to feel good in our city, um, there wouldn't be an explicit expectation for city staff to do anything. I see this more as, uh, for the council to hear what their constituents, um, feel about things that are on the agenda, or things that may not be on the agenda, but they have an idea about something. So for me personally, if I'm hearing something, um, and maybe I continue to hear a theme, I'm going to put that in my head and be like, "Oh, well, may I follow up with that person?" So, but, I, my intent is to not add more work to city staff at all, you know?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Further questions, clarification? Councilmember Cracker?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Thank you, Councilmember Bergy. I had a, I guess maybe this is clarifying perhaps whether this is a, what I'm about to say is another reason, um, to, to have a Monday hearing would be that some of the items on our Tuesday agenda are not on Mondays, therefore, do you feel that it gives people an opportunity to lean on those items on, on Tuesday that are not on Monday's agenda?
Yes, yep, again, to make things easier for, for people to share their thoughts on, yes, knowing they can show up and talk about, and if it's not during specific items, as the, Mr. City Attorney was saying, um, during the, the open comment at the end, they can say, talk to something.
City Attorney?
I agree with that, uh, but I was just going to bring that up, because that, that was another, it's a, kind of a third reason why, at least when I was drafting, totally legislative policy choice, but another reason why I put it at the end is, you know... but another reason why I put it at the end is, you know, again, policy choice. But, you know, do you sort of catch all where, hey, if you want to talk about anything else on Tuesday at the beginning? Or do you specifically say, these are the things that either by state law need a hearing or by, because we think they are going to garner public input, need a discussion, which is how we've always set public discussion items, and say those are the ones that are intentionally scheduled? And then, you know, by your policy, if you choose to adopt this, then, you know, anything else that, you know, we don't anticipate comment, but might garner comment can also be commented on. Or other issues of, you know, general city legislative interest you can comment on. And so then, that just, I think it's the, certainly the lowest of the priority of the comments I gave of why at the end, but that was one I had just forgotten when I was drafting. That was another concept that it just seemed like it made sense there, but your call.
Thank you. Councilmember Bracken.
Thank you Acting President Orson. My question is about if adopted as is tomorrow, it looks like a lot of language to the tune of, I don't know, four generous paragraphs would be inserted to our handbook. And I'm wondering if there were thoughts around just kind of a simple editorial change to the handbook. You know, what we're looking at now has a lot of rules around what people can and cannot do and shall and shall not do, and I don't see anywhere near really any rules like that in our handbook. So it, to me, it, let me save my commentary. Is there a more simple way to update the handbook, still getting at the spirit of opening up the discussion? And maybe that's a good question for Mr. Nick.
I'll certainly try. I mean, you know, brevity, like so many things, is in the eye of the beholder. But, you know, under a page on what is, I mean, we might not perceive it, but I mean, I just came back from a national conference where this was, this issue was discussed. And discussed because it is a serious problem in many cities that have it. And hopefully it never becomes that way here, but there, I mean, we spent an hour and a half talking about all the ways and all the federal lawsuits that have stemmed from open public comment periods. So this is very short and tries to capture some of those. But in fact, one of the things I would strongly recommend that you do, whether you adopt a comment period or not, but that this touches on, is trying to put more written council rules around disruptive conduct and what it, what it looks like and what objective standards are of whether, you know, again, thankfully things that we don't see here, but sadly, cities in, you know, LA and throughout California and southwest and south see quite regularly of very disruptive, very offensive behavior. So some of the ways to try to get a handle on that that are recommended, actually thankfully already had in here, things of, at least make sure it's someone that's a resident, make sure it's something on general legislative policy, make sure that it's not profane or boasters. But, you know, I don't have things in there that unfortunately they deal with sadly every meeting. People showing up in Klan costumes and masks and berating the personal appearances of council members. I mean, they were showing clips of things that would just blanch you, that are at the start of every one of their meetings. And so they were talking about how to put, you know, you know, the whole session was on how, page upon page of regulation to try to show that when you try to stop that, you're not being content-based. You're not picking on a person, you're not making that decision based on some policy or viewpoint basis, but on some already adopted council rule. So hopefully in far El Claire, we never get there, but there's plenty of communities sadly that are already there. And the best way to do that and not have a federal lawsuit where then if they prove even an indication that there was some content-based reason that you're taking action, they give attorneys fees, is to have probably frankly a lot more of this. I mean, again, it's a list of horribles, and so we don't have that, haven't had that experience around here. But, I mean, there were six-figure settlements that were routinely going on in meetings that are routinely just horribly offensive that they're sharing with us, that particularly the LA area deals with.
Does that help answer the question, Councilmember Bracken?
Yeah, it does. I have maybe just a, I think a brief follow-up is, is there a way that we could look at that more broadly speaking so that it doesn't just single out this one topic? For example, somebody wants to show up in maybe a costume that most people in the public would find offensive talking about a publicly noticed item. Right now, that would, unless the body said, excuse me, you can't stand there with that outfit on, that would stand. So it seems, is there a way that we could address it in a broader way without singling out this particular potential change in our public hearing?
And I, I think very much so that that's what we should do, but it'll likely be at least another page of drafting. So I would not encourage you to reduce anything. I would just point you to the, to the fourth bullet where, you know, in just three, you know, lines, we can just get that concept across at least as a starting point to say, you know, among the things that are prohibited, profane, disruptive, threatening, or conduct that otherwise impedes the safe, orderly, and effective conduct of city council meetings is equally unacceptable during the resident public forum as it is during all other portions of the city meetings. So I hope you would agree with me that that's intentionally trying not to single this out. In fact, what I was kind of trying to do is bootstrap a start of something in right here everywhere else to kind of say it applies equally here to everything else, because we don't really have that written down anymore. We, on rare occasion, have had to infer that as an understood council rule. But it is, we don't have those sort of written council rules, and in fact, we probably should work on those. But I don't think that, this is not my recommendation that you take that away. You know, that, again, I'm making every effort to say this is not unique to this comment period. It applies here as it does everywhere else. And then what I'd suggest is we work on the everywhere else promptly too before we have any of those sort of problems.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you Acting President Orson. I have a question, I think it will probably find a theme for our city attorney. I'm interested in this language around it shall be limited to ideas or concerns of citywide application amenable to the city council legislative action. And I appreciate the, on the one hand, that's a specific, you know, scope for the conversation. But I'm kind of wondering, one, is it the council president or who makes the determination? Or is it a court order that leads to that determination? Is that how that would work? And then my second question to solve if I could is, I think those are important concepts, but they are, in some ways, they're fairly abstract. And I'm just wondering if now or maybe later is the time to talk about how those could be communicated effectively to people that are unfamiliar with our processes? What does it mean for something to be, is my, how do I know if my concern is of citywide application? Or, do you know what I'm getting at? I'm not sure if there's a way to, how we would communicate that or? I don't know if, if that's for you or for who that's for, actually.
City Attorney?
I could try. Again, at risk of making this, you know, this longer, but whether here or, you know, building off that concept, maybe in the sign-up sheet, maybe on our website, we could give basically some examples to maybe help people frame it as a broader issue. Because you could have a specific negative issue that you've experienced and still state that in an issue of citywide application. So, you know, you could have an issue where, you know, you went through an uncontrolled intersection and you got a ticket, you got a citation for failing to yield the right-of-way in that instance. And, you know, you could either come to the podium and say, I don't like that darn police officer. I don't like the city prosecutor who's prosecuting me. I want, I want you to get rid of my ticket. Or I got, I was found guilty of it, but that's wrong, and give me a refund. That's a specific issue that has no citywide application. It's inappropriate for this. It's not a remedy that the city council can, can provide. However, you can just, you know, you can make a general application that's built on that experience and indicate, I think I, we should have a controlled intersection. We should install a stop sign. You know, now it's a legislative matter. And, you know, that, so that's an issue of maybe giving some examples in those, some of those different locations I said, or having a little help from the chair, or, you know, the city attorney to try to reframe that. But what this rule would say would be that the former wouldn't be acceptable, you know, the latter would.
Councilmember Bracken?
Thank you Acting President Orson. I guess this could be either for Councilmember Burge or Mr. City Attorney, but I guess it's a, and it's maybe somewhat of a broad question that could take a little time. But there's a name here that's attached to this as the resident public forum. And I guess I had a question about how we got to that name, because I think there's a lot packed in there, actually, and it could end up being really the public face of what it is, is those three words. So I guess, how are each of those words chosen? And because I guess I see resident as, you know, potentially having people feel they have to be a resident, which I think this implies that they do, maybe even require it. But then also, the word forum implies to me that maybe there's more of a conversation than what we really are looking for, than more of a listening session type of thing, so, or an input session. So I guess there's a bunch of questions in there about the name.
Councilmember Burge, City Attorney?
Okay.
The, the only one that, that is a technical requirement is the resident. That, that is a requirement in, it's either a resident or some business affiliation connection is, is the, in one of the prongs, which runs at, it's in there, it's not jumping out at me, but that, that is a requirement. Public, you probably don't, you know, there's probably no concern about it in forum. I'm guessing, I grabbed it from one of the other examples that we talked about at the pre-legislative session. I flipped through a few options too, I don't know, input. Trip my linguistic, you know, trigger, but you all can call it whatever you like. But I do recommend the residency or some business connection. Again, it's residency, it's not citizenship, you know, however stated. But what, what it's really trying to avoid is, you know, out of area people that are making potentially, you know, creating issues for you that really aren't yours to make. I mean, if they're out of the area and can't, you know, can't find somebody who's, who's in the community to state that legislative issue, I mean, perhaps one you don't need to spend time listening to. And it, it was definitely one of the recommendations I heard this past week at my conference.
Thank you. Further questions?
Second.
I haven't seen any. Thank you, Councilmember Burge, for presenting. Are there any members of the public here this evening who would like to speak about this proposal for a resident public forum, which we're going to be voting on tomorrow? Anyone here to speak on this? Seeing no one interested at this time, we will move to item number seven, which is express, express baseball lease. This is a public discussion on the Carson Park Baseball Field Lease Use Agreement extension between the City of El Claire and El Claire Baseball LLC and the Northwoods League Incorporated. Mr. President?
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the city council is a, is an extension of the express lease agreement. Current status, right now, the city and the express have a current lease agreement that started in 2014 and goes through 2019. This agreement would be after that agreement is done, so they finished the fourth year of that agreement. The express approached the city with a request to extend their current lease. Part of that reason was they are involved along with the city with a fundraising effort to do improvements at Carson Park Baseball. So the timing and importance for that fundraising was current out in their, in their consideration. The city and the express have enjoyed a cooperative relationship at Carson Park Baseball Park since 2005. This agreement is essentially a status quo with the exception of the term, the rent, structural, and default sections, and I'll go through those a little bit more specifically. The term of this agreement is a ten-year extension. As I said before, it goes after the current lease agreement that ends in the fall of 19. This will commence on September first of 2019 and go through August 31st of 2029. The longer-term agreement adds certainly for the express and also for the fundraising group that's fundraising for the improvements at Carson Park. Subject to city council approval, the longer term also does give the city some benefit for our revenue operational and also the scheduling for the park at Carson Park Baseball. The rent, we continue the fee increases on the current agreement. In 2015, it started, we, we started out with a $500 per game cost for the rent. And in 2019, we'll end up with a $600 per game rent. The new proposed agreement starts out in 2020 with a $675 per game rent and ends in 2029 with $900 per game rent. That's a $25 increase per year, for every year after the 2020 season. The structural capital, the current agreement is $10,000 per year for a total of $50,000. Those existing funds of their, of their donation also has a city match, and that would be used to help pay for new bleachers if the full capital project is not successful. The proposed agreement is a $20,000 per year for a total of $200,000. And the new capital in this agreement may be used for the Carson Park Baseball project, but only as the last money into the project. So if you recall, we have an agreement with, with the user groups and stakeholders for the improvements at Carson Park Baseball. It's a $3 million project. They have to fundraise for 1.5 million of them. So they would have to, in order to use this money, is that they'd have to fundraise for 1.3 million before we allow them to use that $200,000. The last part of the agreement that we looked at is the default section of the agreement. In the event that the express defaults in this agreement, it would give the Northwoods League the opportunity to find a remedy. So basically, they could bring in a new team with a new manager, new coaches, but that would be all subject to city approval. Currently, the agreement that we have now, if the, the express would default, it comes back to the city and we would have to renegotiate a contract with somebody new. So the total agreement... So, the total agreement is, the, the five-year term that we're working on now, the total rent of that agreement is 99,000, capital is 50,000, for a total of 149,000. The proposed ten-year term gives us a rent of 283,500, capital of 200,000, for a total of 483,500. All the other operational items within the agreement that we have now would remain the same. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pickinger. Questions from council? Clarifications? Counselor Murray-Strobel?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, and one more. We talked about this in closed session, and I wonder if it's similar to the terms of, that we, I can't remember anymore, that we had sort of suggested with the city per city. I don't remember your question. The other question is, on the $200,000 new capital, that's over a ten-year period of time, are you, are you suggesting that we would potentially front that money and then just, and use the monies to build the stadium? Front the extra $200,000 if they don't raise it up? And then we would just say, well, over the next ten years, we're going to recover that? Is that, is that how that would potentially work?
I'll, I'll attempt to answer both, and if Mr. Nick wants to step in and perhaps clarify. But on the first part, yes, this does meet the objectives and the criteria we're looking at for rent and, and the structural capital. They, they meet those objectives. And on the second portion, in, in regards to the $200,000, if they are successful on that, that, we would do that, we would front that, that'd be part of something that we would likely own for. And then they would get paid back through their, their rent. The structural payment that they would give each other.
And a follow-up on that. The concern that I thought was that it was expressed a little bit was that capital per year, wasn't, wasn't that meant to, you know, like upgrade the, the fan deck or the scoreboard or stuff? Improvements at the park, and if the money's used, you know, for the stadium itself, what monies would be there to sort of upkeep the park?
Well, a couple of things. With, with the project that we're looking at, we're addressing the major issues that we're going to have in the next ten years. So, if we, we, if the fundraising is successful and then we go ahead and, and do the improvements to the stadium, we're going to address those issues that, likelihood, we shouldn't have any other major issues. The other thing is that we do have the, the $100,000 that we haven't done anything with yet from the first project. There's the $50,000 that the express has put in, and then there's a matching fund that the city would have to match for that. And those are for capital projects that we've got. Thank you.
Further questions?
Very quickly augment, just on that last part of the comment, and this follow-up lease clarifies the intended use of that 50, and then the city's 50, the $100,000. So, you'll see on page six, paragraph seven, sub B, that, you know, it makes reference to that early amount and indicates that such funds shall be used for the Carson Park Baseball Stadium Structural Grandstand Improvement as contemplated by the November 2014 agreement. So, you know, that's what those amounts are earmarked for, and then certainly the, the $200,000 amount, parties could all agree quite readily that, you know, that's a substantial capital project. So, really, both sides through this lease extension are agreeing to, you know, substantial capital upgrades and getting past any, you know, past discussion points of whether it would count towards, you know, something else that, that may be needed, but not of, not of the sort of shared capital substance that we were, you know, both hoping for.
Thank you. Thank you. Further, any further questions on this lease agreement? Thank you, Mr. Pickinger. Folks here to speak this evening on the lease agreement? Welcome.
My name's Amy Borack. Address 1618 Sunrise Lane here in Eau Claire. I am one of three owners of the express and also the team CFO. Appreciate the opportunity to speak a little bit on the partnership we've had with the city over the past 14 years. As Mr. Pickinger stated, you know, we've had a very consistent and, and beneficial, mutually beneficial lease agreement during the term of our team being here, and are appreciative of the opportunity to extend that for another 10 years. We're appreciative of the council and the city to work with us on this capital improvement at Carson Park. I think that is a, a big part of why we were energetic to increase our capital improvement fund per year from $10,000 to $20,000 per year. Kind of in relation to what Mr. Strobel talked about with other needs at the stadium, I think we've worked very well in partnership with the city staff on needs that do arise up there. And, you know, in, when those cases have come about, I think we have, we've determined a, a good action to make those things happen collaboratively, and that's something that we look to continue. You know, there's always been a consideration for creating additional revenue opportunities up there that has allowed us to continue to contribute to some of the things that come up that may not be expected up there as far as upkeep, minor improvements, along with the, the major project that has been stated before. So, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Counselor Murray-Strobel?
Thank you, Mr. Mark. It's pretty imperative to the fundraising, because we've been talking about this fundraising for the improvements and stuff, that they're, they're saying it's pretty important to have a, a lease extension, just to make sure that everything is still be there, would you say?
Yeah, I mean, I think for us, what was asked by the fundraising committee of the express was a ten-year commitment to this project, and I think, as a business, we hope for that same security of a similar length. You know, we're happy to support this project for 10 years, last dollars in, of course, but, you know, make that contribution to the city and, and commit to that as long as the terms were equal. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you.
Further questions? Anyone else here to speak on the Eau Claire Express Agreement Extension? Is there anyone else this evening? See no one else at this time? Then, on a motion by Councilmember Strobel and Councilmember Anderson, this meeting is adjourned.
The Eau Claire City Council meeting will return in a moment. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at ValleyMediaWorks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council meeting.
Call this meeting of the Eau Claire City Council, order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Beaton?
Here.
Burge?
Here.
Christopherson?
Amanuel?
Here.
Gregert?
Here.
Strobel?
Here.
Weld?
Here.
Worthman?
Here.
John?
And we have the quorum. Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to city council this evening for our legislative session. I want to thank Valley Media Works for helping to livestream these proceedings to folks who are not able to be here this evening. To see that, please visit ValleyMediaWorks.org or visit the government channel, which is on 994 on Charter Cable. It's also simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. Can find the past meetings of the city council also on the Valley Media Works YouTube channel. We're going to move to our first order of business of the flag. Before we do, though, I'd like to just remind council members that our microphones at our desks are not live, so if you can speak up a little bit, we have the microphones here at the front. Hopefully, that picks up most of our conversation. So, we're going to then move first to our consent agenda. On a motion, sorry, first I'm going to ask if there's any council members who wish to move any items of the consent agenda separately, or have any questions of city staff on any of the items. Seeing no such desire at this time, then on a motion by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Anderson, consent agenda has been moved. Is there discussion? Hearing no discussion on the consent agenda, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Burge?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Amanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
And the consent agenda passes. We do not have a proclamation this evening, so we'll move to our business agenda. First, on our business agenda, item number 12, it's a resolution authorizing the sale of 59, 55-9 North Hastings Way, which is the former site of the fire station number 10. This is also known as parcel 10-0526. Good evening, Ms. Basel.
Thank you. The city of, we sent out a request for proposals for the former fire station property back in July of 2018. In the proposal request, we included that we had an appraisal completed by J.C. Norby and Associates in 2017, giving the property a fair market value of $365,000. We received two proposals back. City staff has reviewed the proposals and believes that the Valley Media Works or Public Access Center, Inc., has a favorable proposal based on the higher purchase price and the more compatible use of the land. The purchase price was $365,000, and the property would be Zone C3. They are planning to redesign the interior to include two studio sets and operating a radio station on the lower level. Are there any questions?
Questions from council at this time? Clarifications? See none? Thank you. Then, on a motion by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Weld, item number 12 has been moved. Is there discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, clerk, please call the roll on this transfer, authorizing the sale of Fire Station Number 10.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Burge?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Amanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
And that item passes. We move to item number 13, which is a resolution awarding the contract for procurement number 2018-59 of Eau Claire Fire Station Number 5 Locker Room Remodel. Because this item's going to amend our budget, we're going to need a two-thirds vote of the elected members, or affirmative eight votes, which is required for adoption. We have our deputy chief, Al Bertrand. Good evening.
Good afternoon. I, I put together a little presentation, just kind of talk about what this project is and why we feel that it's a benefit and worth that adjustment being made. So, what we're talking about is our fire station that's located at 2500 Patton Street. That's at the top of the State Street Hill. The station was opened in 1975, and has been in operation since then. It's actually our busiest station as far as the number of incidents that we respond to around the city of Eau Claire. So, what I'm going to do is just kind of walk you through what it currently looks like, what, what our current status is, and then why we think it would be of benefit to make this adjustment. So, this is a, a look at it from the front of the building. Let me just keep walking around. This is kind of the backside. What we're talking about is a small addition and then some renovation work within the station itself. So, if you take a look at, at the picture that we have up right here, this is the back corner. This is the side that is facing the park and facing Claremont Avenue. So, in that far back corner there, we'd be making a small addition to the building. So, currently, the status of, of the building is, when the building was built in 1975, one restroom was, was put into this station. It only housed three firefighters at that time, and at that time, firefighters were primarily just males. We didn't have females working in the fire service at that time. But now, we, we do have females that work with us. We have females that ride along with us as students and that ride along to visit the fire station on a regular basis. This is also a station that we utilize quite often for tours, so we have a lot of students that come in, as well as daycare students or college students. So, we have a lot of visitors, and, and currently, we just have one restroom that, that currently does not meet ADA needs. There is, however, on the exterior of the building, when it was built in 1875, there were restrooms that were built on the outside of the station, and they have not been utilized for many years. So, it's space that is just being unused right now. We also have one small bunk area for 24-hour employees, and we don't have any private areas that exist within the station for employees or for visitors. Lastly, the office area, because again, it was built a long time ago, it was built quite small, and it does not necessarily meet our needs for documentation for incidents as it once did. Some of the things that are very good about this station is that it is still strategically located very, very well in the city of Eau Claire for responding to incidents within the city and to our neighbors outside of the city. As I said, it's our busiest station for response, and it will be for many years to come. It's adjacent to a city park, so it has good exposure for other uses. It's right next to Claremont Avenue and State Street, so transportation routes, primary transportation routes are right next to it. Again, as I stated, it's used quite regularly for community outreach, such as tours and presentations. Many people visit this station throughout the year. I'm just going to walk you through what it looks like, some of you may not be familiar with it, but that is the office area that we're currently using. Part of the kitchen area, I'm just going to walk you through the whole thing. Another look at the kitchen area within this station, and then the hallway that leads back to the area where we'd like to renovate. This is an area that would be opened up and utilized better for equipment and, and our resources that we have in the station. This is what we currently are using for a bunk area within the station for our 24-hour personnel. This is the only separation that we currently have, is some curtains that we have hanging there. This is an area that's underutilized, right next to that bunk area, that we intend to make changes to if, if the adjustments are made. The restroom areas that we'd like to make changes to, this is the locker room portion. Taking a look into the actual existing restroom area, and then what we currently have, again, does not meet the, the ADA needs right now. So, this is just another look at where we would put an addition on this station. It's not a very big one. And then the existing restroom, restrooms outside, that we intend to use that space for, for a new restroom being added as part of the renovation. And this is just how, how it's been used for many years, as storage, and, and we think we can better utilize this space. Okay, so what we would like to accomplish with this is, we would have two restrooms within our facility for visitors and for employees. We could have males and females using them simultaneously, or however is needed. We'd, we'd meet ADA requirements for restrooms. We'd meet expectations for, by the public and by employees for male and female restroom use. We would provide private rooms in the back area for our, our people and for visitors, and also provide a small office expansion, which would allow multiple personnel to be doing documentation all at one time. Again, we'd meet all of those requirements. And what's nice is we feel like we're doing this in a way where the work would not be wasted. If additional work was wasted, or, I'm sorry, additional work was needed years down the road, this work would not be sacrificed as part of that work. road, this work would not be sacrificed as part of that work. Are there any questions that I can answer about this? The money is being transferred over from a two thousand and seventeen public buildings and repair renovation account. So we would not be using money from other areas, and then we'd instead use it in this area.
Is this project gonna put the fire station operations offline at all?
No, actually, great question. It's gonna be done in two phases, and that is being done with the intent of not having any effect on our operations or minimizing it to almost nothing. So what we'd be doing is most of the work would be done while keeping the current restroom or main area intact, and then that area would be done in the second phase after the other work has been completed.
Thank you. I love the pictures, especially, I love the lazy boy chair in the waiting. Mike in the waiting. My question for you, was this in the two hundred thousand and eighteen CIP?
This particular project?
Yeah, 'cause I see this project, it's two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars is the bid, and we're only re-appropriating and moving seventy thousand, so where are the, the rest of that?
There was, there was a couple of two hundred thousand, if I understand it correctly, in money for renovations in seventeen, or, I'm sorry, in eighteen. And then the other money that we, that we need, the extra sixty-two thousand, is being moved over from other areas. So we have other projects within the city that is being moved from to help cover this cost if you make that adjustment.
So the planning was there?
If I could, yes. The budget, the project had been planned as a two hundred thousand dollar project. It was in the plan. When they went out and did their, their estimates and the final bids, the bids came in at the two sixty-one, which is above the amount that we had budgeted for it, and so they have worked hard to, to find that money in other areas within their improvement, and so the seventy thousand is moving it from other projects they would've done, because they've said this is a priority for them to finish up this remodeling, which had been planned.
Council member Grager?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Thank you, deputy chief. Just the question I have is, if you could tell us more about the restrooms that, where the doors are facing to the outside and why those are the way they are, and then is, does the, does the station serve as any sort of structure or support for the park, in the sense that there's restrooms facing the outside?
Well, my understanding is when the station was first built in nineteen, completed in nineteen seventy-five, the work started in seventy-four, the original intent was, was that area was to be used by the public, and at some later point, that practice was discontinued. And I don't know what year of that was, did that happen?
So as a, as a follow-up, the, there would not be restrooms that would be facing the?
That's correct. We utilized that area to add to the existing interior of the station. So it would add a bath, and it would add separate private areas for employees.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions from council?
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Then on a motion by council member Beaton, seconded by council member Grager, item number thirteen has been moved. Is there discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll. Just a reminder that we're gonna need two-thirds vote of elected members.
Council member Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that item passes. We move to item number fourteen, which is regarding budget appropriations. This is a resolution authorizing budget appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. Because this item amends a budget, the two-thirds vote, again, of the elected members is gonna be required. It's affirmative eight votes for adoption. Mr. Solberg?
Thank you. Before you's resolution authorizing miscellaneous third-quarter budget appropriations, we have four thousand nine hundred dollars for the library for grants and donations, and thirty thousand three hundred dollars for the health department for various grants and donations. I would take any questions.
Any questions? I don't see any at this one. Thank you. Then on a motion by council member Bergy, sorry, your, your name plaques are, I'm not gonna get it wrong, but your name plaques are on the left side, so. Seconded by council member Christopherson. This item has been moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
And item number fourteen passes.
We move to item fifteen, which is a resolution accepting and appropriating Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, also known as JAG Formula Program Funds, from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance. Again, this is gonna require a two-thirds vote, or eight affirmative votes. Ms. Thompson?
This resolution would approve a grant in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars from the Department of Justice. We share this grant with the Sheriff's Office. We get seventy-five percent, and they get twenty-five percent. That's based on agreement we had before we even applied. Our funds, nine thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars, will be used to purchase tasers. The Sheriff's Office funds will be used to purchase two laptops and a video surveillance monitor.
Okay. Thank you. Is there questions regarding this item? I don't see any. Thank you. Then on a motion by council member Strobel, seconded by council member Anderson, item number fifteen, grant, has been moved. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that passes. We're on to item number seventeen. This is a street vacation. We heard about this last night. This is a resolution vacating a portion of Mall Drive from south of Business Highway Fifty-three to north of the property line, Lot One. Are there any additional questions or clarification about this street vacation that council members have right now? I see none. Then on a motion by council member Beaton, seconded by council member Grager, the street vacation, item number seventeen, has been moved. Is there discussion? No discussion? Then, clerk, please call the roll on item number seventeen.
Council member Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that passes. We're on to item number seventeen. This is a street vacation. We heard about this last night. This is a resolution vacating a portion of Mall Drive from south of Business Highway Fifty-three to north of the property line, Lot One. Are there any additional questions or clarification about this street vacation that council members have right now? I see none. Then on a motion by council member Beaton, seconded by council member Grager, the street vacation, item number seventeen, has been moved. Is there discussion? No discussion? Then, clerk, please call the roll on item number seventeen.
Council member Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
And that street vacation passes. We then move to number eighteen on our business agenda. This is a resolution accepting a petition for the improvement of an alley east of Rust Street, Gilbert Avenue to the north. We had a presentation last night. We also had folks come down and speak to us about this issue. Is there any further questions that council members may have of Mr. Solberg or anyone else? Council member Weld?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I'll be abstaining from this agenda item.
Okay. Thank you. Council members have questions? Council member Grager?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I had a question for Mr. Solberg. Thank you. I guess I was wondering about the width at which we would likely be paving this particular alley, and how wide the right-of-way is?
The right-of-way is sixteen feet wide. We would likely pave the alley. We generally don't go any narrower than twelve feet, and we like to keep a foot on each side so we can match it with topsil. So right now, I'd say it'd be fourteen feet unless we come across something that is constraining, and we have to shrink it up to twelve. So fourteen would be the widest, twelve would be the narrowest.
Thank you.
Council member Strobel?
Thank you. I was open with the property, and Mr. Solberg, it appears that the gentleman that built the garage is actually, or, concrete in the alley right-of-way. How would you address that?
When he, he had worked with our community development, our inspections folks on that, so they had asked for part of the garage, for like an approach, like your driveway, grocery driveways, and the right-of-way out there, and we'd said, that's okay, but it would have to come out if we improved the alley on that, and he understood that when he placed that out there. So it was, it was within the right-of-way, but it was treated as, you know, similarly to your driveway approach when you go from the sidewalk to the street.
Looking at that, it's certainly no bigger on the map than the person, it's not that long. Wouldn't you pave all the way to the end of his garage? Where would that improve the alley then?
We generally pave to the end of, the end of the alley, which goes through. However, with the end of the alley terminating in two properties, we could stop at the property line, and then they would be responsible for a driveway on their side of it, thirty feet of that, but generally, we improve them to the end of it so we don't have to come back later, because it's very difficult to a partial alley on that.
You work with the property owners on there?
Yep, and whether we get to the full length enough, the same assessment would apply, because it's per front, per length of frontage on the alley. Council member Thompson?
Thank you.
Council member Emanuel, did you have a question?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. My question is just tangential to the item we're looking at. In some of the photographs we saw last night, there seemed to be some overgrowth of brush that would then perhaps impede on the utility of the alleyway if approved. Is that something that City would look at addressing, or is that based on a complete basis? How does that get addressed, that if this gets approved, that there is full usage of the alleyway?
We, with the plans to improve the alley with the asphalt pavement, there's a clearing item, so that the vegetation that is overgrown and prevents its use will be taken out with our construction project. If we have alleys, we take calls for alleys, the ones last year that we brought forward in the spring first street hearings, that we ended up not improving, but people still wanted to use the alley because it was their access, so we work with our community services folks, and they will go and brush out when they have resources available, the alley, so you can at least use it if you're a property owner for that. So if we get, if we get a complaint of an alley being overgrown, and there's evidence that it's being used, then we try to ensure that the vegetation is trimmed back. Generally, we give the property owners the first warning, you know, take care of it, please, and if they don't, then we'll take care of it for them. I guess we haven't built, that I'm aware of, for adjacent property owners, like when our folks go out there. If we have to hire a service to go out there, then we certainly would, like our snow plowing, or not snow plowing, but shuttling, if people want to shuttle their driveways or the sidewalks, they need to build for that. But yeah, I'm not aware that we have done that. It's just part of the maintenance. Our alley maintenance is one of our lower tiers of maintenance, maybe on these trees and sweeping and so forth. But yeah, we just kinda treat it like all of our trees. We all in charge people, and we trim all of our trees that are in the right of us.
Thank you very much.
Further questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. On a motion then by council member, I believe this is gonna be Beaton, seconded by council member Grager, this, yeah, this alley improvement, item number eighteen, has been moved. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
And item number eighteen, alley improvement, has passed. We will move then to our appointments. This is item number nineteen on the business agenda, and this is a resolution appointing the city of Oak Clare voting delegates for the two thousand and eighteen National League of Cities Conference, and this is, I'll open it to our city manager Peters to describe this.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. So the National League of Cities Conference is coming up in November. We have four council members that have signed up to go to that conference, council members Bergy, Anderson, Christopherson, and Gregert. At the conference, as a national conference, they will occasionally have resolutions that they consider for passage. Each municipality gets a representation that's there to vote. Based on our population, we get two votes, and so the resolution before you would appoint one of the four council members that are going to the conference to be the primary delegate, and would represent the two votes, and but in the off-chance that that person's unable to be there or unable to vote, they ask that an alternate is also selected. So the resolution before you would be looking to put a name as the primary and a alternate to be your representative for any resolutions that are brought forward at the National League of Cities Conference in November.
Thank you, city manager Peters. Is there questions regarding this before we pass it? Council member Beaton? If I could just remind council members to speak up to, sorry.
Have we, have we pointed in the past?
Yes.
Okay. I never remember that. Okay. I guess I don't remember.
Any further questions? I think you guys are gonna enjoy it. It's gonna be fun. Councilmember Bergy and Christopherson for moving and seconding. Is that okay? Wonderful. This item is then on the floor. Does anyone want to speak to the appointment of our voting delegates from the City Council of the National League of Cities? I see no, I see interest from Councilmember Strobel.
Have we nominated or chosen who those delegates are going to be?
No, you're doing that right now.
Further comments? Councilmember Graggard.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I would nominate myself as the delegate or as the primary.
Councilmember Graggard is on that list. There's a few others who are interested. Nominate themselves.
I could use an alternate.
Okay. Councilmember Anderson is an alternate. Further?
Just to, that would fill it if it's the slate thing.
Wonderful. Is there any other nominations that folks would like to make from the floor or are you okay with that? Okay, wonderful. Then with Councilmember Graggard as nominated, Councilmember Anderson as an alternate. I think we can fill in those names and move on to vote on this final resolution. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Greggert.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye. And thank you for doing that. Thank you for your service. Moving on to the item number twenty on our draft agenda, or sorry, on our business agenda. This is a resolution appointing folks to reappointments and appointments to our various boards, committees, and commissions. Our advisory committee on appointments met last week and recommended positions. Folks to be appointed to the Housing Authority, to Putnam Park Commission, Sustainability Advisory Committee, and Zoning Board of Appeals. You'll see on the list here, we did not have someone at the time for the Putnam Park Commission. But to the Housing Authority, we had recommended Thomas Evans, which is a new appointment to an unexpired five-year term as the tenant representative on the Housing Authority. For the Sustainability Advisory Committee, we have recommended a new appointment to an unexpired three-year term to expire April first of 2021 of Tyler Zeig. And for the Zoning Board of Appeals, our committee had recommended a new appointment to an unexpired three-year term, a second alternate to expire December thirty-first, 2019 of Timothy Hay. And you'll note that Tim Hay is the second alternate on the Zoning Board of Appeals. So those are the recommendations that we put forward. Are there any questions that council members have of either myself or of Councilmember Beaton and Councilmember John also serves on the appointments but isn't here this evening? Any questions, clarification? Seeing none. Then on a motion by Councilmember Beaton, I'll second. The recommendations for boards, committees, and commissions have been moved. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll on the appointments to these committed commissions.
Councilmember Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Greggert.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
And that, Anderson is out. And that item passes. Just want to say thank you to folks in our community who step up to serve on all of our boards, committees, and commissions. It's just something that is really helpful for the deliberative process, but also to help give a voice to so many in our community who want to serve and who want to be a part of this great organization. And if I could just remind folks at home as well, there's a great tool online. If you're interested at all in serving on any of our boards, committees, and commissions, you can sign up. And we review those probably quarterly. It's kind of based on need, but it's quarterly. And fill in our vacancies on committees, commissions, and boards. And again, you know, most everyone that I've ever served with on those finds it to be rewarding and meaningful experience. And it is hugely appreciated, not only by elected leaders here in the City Council, but by citizens across Eau Claire for the service of folks on those committees, commissions, and boards. So thank you for your work and your time and service. Move then to item number twenty-one, which is express baseball lease. This is a resolution approving the Carson Park Baseball Field Lease Use Agreement Extension between the City of Eau Claire and Eau Claire Baseball LLC and the North Woods League Incorporated. We heard about this last evening, but council members may have further questions or clarification of this item? Seeing none. On a motion then by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Strobel. This express baseball lease has been moved. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Greggert.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
And that item passes. Thank you for all the work that went into that as well. I know it's quite a lot. Move then to item number twenty-two. This is resident public forum discussion. And this is a resolution that would be amending the City of Eau Claire handbook for public officials to include guidelines for resident public forums at our Monday City Council meetings. Last evening, we had a presentation by Councilmember Bergy. And this item is being brought by both Councilmember Bergy and Christopherson. So council members have any questions or clarification before it's moved? Councilmember Strobel?
I just wanted maybe to hear again from the city attorney, some of the concerns. I know we talked about them briefly last night. Some of the concerns moving forward. Because I know that the city attorney and city manager both expressed some information in the research. If you could just give us a little bit.
City Attorney Nick.
Yeah, I, this is a policy choice by council. So in terms of concerns, you know, I wouldn't frame them that way. I think instead there are legal parameters that you have, and we talked about that in the pre-legislative session. So what's in front of you is certainly legal and within your discretion to do. But there are outside legal parameters under, most notably, our open meetings law that prevents discussion back with any of these public comments. And so that's handled in here, that it's a direct comment to council and that doesn't permit an ongoing discussion, or at least not at that meeting until it's been specifically noticed. So that's a legal issue or boundary. Again, not concern. And the other things are just issues, you know, to make you aware of, you know. So certainly, we all hope that it would be used if you choose to use it in a positive way, that it's another avenue, as noted, I think, at the beginning and again at the end of this proposed amendment to your handbook as an additional means for public input and comment. But certainly is one of our jobs and certainly, you know, yours too, to sort of sense what's in the best interest of the public. But ours and our professional ability is sharing with you experiences that we've had or that other communities that were aware of this had. And so we had that discussion at the pre-legislative and I pointed out a few of those to you. So some of those concerns are really anytime you have public notice. I mean, that's just the nature of the job. And we don't in any way discriminate or take action based on viewpoint. But there's some viewpoint that's expressed in a positive, acceptable manner, and there's others that simply is not. So what you have to do is make sure you put the processes in place to say, you know, we're not concerned about what you think, but you know, the manner in which perhaps you convey it could be acceptable or not acceptable. So things like that, that you need to think about in advance. And obviously, I've done my best within the direction you've given me to try to think of some of those things in advance. And I think you might have another step beyond in terms of trying to define specifically some of those things that might be profane, disruptive, threatening. We can continue to work on that again, but that applies whether it's this sort of a resident public comment period or forum, if you will, or any of our other public hearings or discussion items.
Did that help answer your question? No. Do you have a further question? Do you have any other questions? Okay. Do council members have any other questions of either a city attorney or city manager or the movers of this item? Seeing none. Then on a motion by Councilmember Bergy and seconded by Councilmember Christopherson. This item has been moved. And I will defer to both of you to speak first on this, just because that's normally the practice, if you wish. Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I see this as being something that I can wholeheartedly support. It invites the public to participate. It removes a lot of confusion about what can I address, when can I address it? It, in the protocol of the conversation, it allows us to pretty much receive and direct appropriate responses while allowing anyone to participate in that session. I think it also allows us to begin something that we have not done in the past and expand our reception of public comment based on our experience. So I really appreciate the work that my colleague, Councilmember Bergy, brought forward and Mr. City Attorney, the way that he has resourced us and brought this document forward. So it could be that this would be a larger, more generous participation in the years to come. But I think this is certainly something that I can wholeheartedly support.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Councilmember Bergy, would you like to speak as well?
Sure. I just did my big thing last night. But just to kind of recap, that I guess I understand that this is a big change for council and the city, and I do appreciate that. I understand that when I, what I was gonna say last night, I'll just finish that thought. When I was in grad school, one of my professors said, you know, when you go to a new position, don't rearrange the furniture right away. And I understand that, but you know, like, you might go into some place and see things that they've been doing, but they probably do it for a reason and to not take that lightly. Now, I've been here for almost seven months in this position, so I hope it's enough time to offer this up, to change things up. But again, I understand it's a change and I appreciate, I appreciate that, that it's a different way of doing things. So, but I, just to reiterate, the people are showing up to meetings wanting to speak is what I've noticed. And they get turned away, or they just leave not speaking because they aren't able to speak. Also, I see people confused as to what items they can speak on and how, what the topic of it, because they can't speak to anything that's not on the agenda or certain things. And I do feel like this will just make things easier. It'll also make the council more accessible to the residents of Eau Claire because we do represent them. And I feel like that's always beneficial, if they can reach us another way. So that's kind of my, so I am bringing it forward and I appreciate council members. Christopherson's work on this as well. And with the city attorney, Mr. Nick has worked really hard on that and I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bergy. Are there further comments, questions, amendments, or further actions on this? Councilmember Strobel.
I would like to propose an amendment.
Okay.
On the resolution, under now or now therefore be a resolve, that a resident public forum session is added as an additional option to the public input during Monday City Council meetings period. I would add in, all public discussions to be limited to items noticed on Tuesday's agenda and conducted according to the open meetings on Monday City Council rules. Do I have a second?
Is there a second on that? Councilmember Weld is seconding. Do council members feel like they have a grasp, a firm grasp of what that amendment is? Do you have it printed off, Councilmember?
Can you say it one more time?
I just repeated. So basically, I'm just adding in there after Monday City Council meetings, just put a period in. And then, all public discussion to be limited to items noticed on the Tuesday agenda. And then you just finish it and conduct it. So.
Okay. I'll let, yeah, I'll let you speak to your reasoning of that.
The only logical reason I got from last night's conversation was actually from Councilmember Graggard. And I think that those are, those are items sometimes on a Tuesday where people are not typically allowed to speak. They would still be unnoticed items, so they're all already on our agenda, we know what's going on. And I think that's the one time I think I could sort of accept something like this if it wasn't meant to be Tuesday.
Okay. Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I would like to respond to that amendment. One of the reasons why Councilmember Bergy and I moved in this particular direction is this brings the council proceedings into alignment with the Board of Education and the County Board, who both allow open conversation or open items to be brought. So again, it would lessen the chance of confusion, not saying that a lot of people would be confused, but we are no longer the exception. And that citizens, for instance, the affordable housing issues, that was something that was requested and brought into a public item that never did appear on the agenda. So I think that there may be other items like that, and it gives them an avenue to bring those to our attention without adding it on the agenda first. That would be part of the rationale of why it's ruled.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Yeah, I'd like to speak on this amendment as well. I think it's, while I respect the motion to amend this being brought by Councilmember Strobel, I do think that over the years that I've served on council, there have been a number of instances where community members don't have something on the agenda, but they have a good idea. And I think it's really important for us to try to open up our conversation, our dialogue, to hear those good ideas. Because while we're elected and we go through that process, we're not always going to have the best ideas. And our citizens will bring us new ideas that we should hear. And so my feeling on this is, and I look at the skateboard issue, I look at the affordable housing. I'd say almost quarterly, there are citizens that contact me and that say, "We have this new idea we'd like you to think about or to consider." And I think this offered, that offers this opportunity. And so I hope that we can keep this open. I don't know that it will be filled every meeting with people coming with new ideas, but I think that at least offers that opportunity if people want to come down and share something. So while I respect the amendment to make this narrower, I think we ought to keep it how it is. Further comments by council? On this amendment, seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Christopherson.
No.
Emanuel.
No.
Greggert.
No.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
No.
Worthman.
No.
Anderson.
No.
Beaton.
No.
Bergy.
No.
And that amendment fails. Further amendments or discussion? Councilmember Weld.
Acting President, I have an amendment as well. Mine is specifically with the official handbook. And would be an attachment to the resolution. That's a part of what we're voting on, so if I could pass this on.
Sure. Thank you. Councilmember Weld.
All right, thank you. The, you know, I mentioned the concern last night in regards to, yes, great that we have an open line of communication, great that there are ideas that are being brought before us, but I just wanted.
Councilmember Strobel?
Should he get a second before he speaks?
I'll second.
Is this a, just Councilmember Emanuel seconding? Sure. Continue, sorry.
As I was saying, I just want to make sure that, you know, it's been mentioned several times. The ideal line of communication to avoid the public notice concerns is, you know, directly with our council members when a resident has a concern or an idea or suggestion. So I felt those important, that at least it's clear, you know, when they do come up to speak, that somebody will get back to them and it's clear as to who that responsibility would fall on. Again, keeping up with the idea that we're here, a representation of our district. If we are district council members and obviously at large, you know, we're here representing everybody. So I thought it'd be, you know, nice to at least have it as part of the end of the second bullet point there, where it says and confirm that they either live or have a place of business in the City of Eau Claire. And then it would read, "Your district city council member will be your follow-up contact regarding any concerns, comments, or ideas that you wish to express during this forum. Please check yes or no in this row box on the signup sheet. If you do or do not, we request a follow-up response." And the idea there was, you know, part of this resolution is that people would sign in prior or at some point and they could be a box there or something that they could check if they do want to follow up in regards to it. And some may and some may not. So that's the first part of it. The last part, I just wanted to add or change the end of that sentence and really just change the order in which, you know, again, keeping up with what we're trying to accomplish in that communication with council members, and maybe not always primarily with staff, but it just reversed to city council member or city manager. And then again, because of the importance of keeping this communication with our council members, just adding the word encouraged along with welcome. There any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Weld. And are there questions to the movers of this? Or Councilmember Emanuel, you would like to speak to this as well?
Thank you, Acting President. And thank you, Councilmember Weld, for bringing this forward. I really like this idea, so I definitely will be supporting this. A process question. I guess this is a hypothetical situation. Let's say that, I'm gonna use a really silly one. Let's say that I'm.
Let's say that I want purple marshmallows. I'm a citizen and I want purple marshmallows in the city of O'Clare, and my district rep hates purple marshmallows. Really has a thing for the, I don't know, green ones. So, what if there's already a little bit of a, perhaps adversarial relationship on that topic? What if a citizen doesn't feel comfortable going to their district rep about it because of their, you know, writings on the wall, this person's not in my corner on this? Do you think that, um, we could think about another way that we can encourage folks? Maybe even something like, well, I'll just leave it there, maybe you've thought of this already, and if not, maybe we can talk about it a little more?
I have not thought of old purple marshmallows.
Are you in favor of them?
I love marshmallows, if that helps. You know, I guess, uh, I, I think it would, whoever the council member, uh, representing that district, you know, I would hope that they would remove themselves from that and just ask another council member to step in, uh, and respond to that person, or ask his staff. I really just want to make sure that, that we're not all assuming someone's going to get back to that person. And so, you know, councilmember Beaton is required to, to at least see that it gets to the next step, whether it's her or it's whomever. Um, and if, you know, like I said, if there's a question about whether or not we're really getting represented as we had hoped, then, you know, I would hope that one happens. I guess anything's possible.
Councilmember Weld, could I suggest, um, working off of councilmember Emanuel's, uh, point? Is that instead of using the word will, maybe replacing it with may? Because I think that's kind of how it works anyway with our phone calls and our emails, is that we're not required, but it's in good form and it's expected, and that would at least allow... A little more wiggle room?
I'm okay with that, as long as the district, city council member understands that there's not a choice and they are responsible to getting back to them, or someone, seeing that somebody does, if, if that's what they wish, the resident.
Further comments by council? Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Um, I support these, uh, changes made by, um, my colleague, councilmember Weld. And I, although a, a person could, um, consider that discussion, it, it really is our responsibility, as elected, to represent and respond to constituents. And if that council member does not respond, I think that is good feedback to that constituent. Um, I, I'd like to think that everybody's willing and wanting to be relational with the people that go through them. But particularly when you're, uh, specifying that it's the district, um, council member that would be that follow-up contact, it makes that very clear to the person who's participating. And then you've already in the last sentence offered as an additional need. So if they, if they don't hear anything, they see that they have access to all council members on the, on the webpage. I, I think this is quite thoughtful.
Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I, uh, I guess, I do, I do like the idea of, uh, you know, pinpointing, uh, some responsibility upon council members to do this. I guess that somewhat of a question about how we've actually...
No.
...can accomplish it, from the perspective of we're not asking for email or phone number and, or we just ask for, we just ask for a name and address, and sometimes it's, it's hard to find a way to get ahold of people, you know, with just that amount of information. And I guess I find that same problem when we have those, those online comment forums, where it's, we really don't know how to get ahold of that person, uh, who commented online. So maybe this amendment could also include an amendment to the, to the second bullet point. You know, asking for name, address, and phone number, uh, for example. Um, of course, not everybody has that, and not everybody has an address either, so I'm trying to figure out how we can actually accomplish this follow-up. And so maybe there's some thoughts on that.
Councilmember Weld?
I mean, I don't know if it's as simple as putting it up, you know, when we set up the sign-up sheet, that, that there is a column for a phone number and...
Email.
And email. At that time, they could, and again, if they wish to be contacted, they would fill out that next step. If they didn't have any interest in being contacted and really just wanted to speak, um, then they wouldn't fill that portion of it out. I didn't want to get too specific, because I know councilmember Burge mentioned, you know, part of this is there are people that don't have email and don't have phones and, um, and obviously we're, we're trying to serve them too. I'm okay with adding, you know, verbiage to, to clarify that, but if necessary.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I think the spirit of this is really customer service. It's really serving people with clear communication. I think, I think maybe we should just try it. We're, we can spin all these different scenarios. Why don't we just try it? In three months, if this column on a document is a train wreck, then we'll have a new conversation. Why don't we just try it? Gets at the spirit, we can fix as we go.
Okay. Councilmember Man, uh, Beaton?
Thank you. Um, I, I appreciate this amendment and, um, we'll be supporting it as well. And, um, just wanted to speak really briefly to councilmember Emanuel's, uh, question. Um, I think that when it comes, you know, when it comes to this, uh, or any other, um, instance where we're expected to follow up, um, and perhaps don't, or, or make a decision that's different than what our constituents want, that's, uh, time, you know, we're held accountable at the polls. And so, if we're a council member that's consistently not, you know, following up the way that we should be, I, I think, I think the democratic process to, uh, you know, um, ha, hold, hold us all accountable.
Thank you, councilmember Beaton. Further, councilmember Burge?
Thank you, Acting President. Yeah, I, uh, also agree with what's behind this. Um, just to clarify who's responsible for the follow-up, because I, like I said last night, I don't want to add more to the plates of city staff. Um, and I do think it's our job as council members to respond to our constituents. Uh, I am, as, and I appreciate what councilwoman Emanuel was saying about being flexible, because I think that will need to happen, because I'm thinking, what if, uh, I strive to be here at every meeting, but what if I'm not at a meeting and someone from my district shows up? You know, what? I would hope someone would let me know. But again, yeah, we could play that game all night long, because I don't want to do that necessarily. But there are things that we're going to have to work out. I don't know if with the language, speaking out loud, to get rid of the district council, the district, but just a council member, but kind of an unwritten rule is that we would, like, I would want to follow up with my constituents, but if I'm not there, perhaps someone else would do that, maybe an at-large person. Like, right now, it's when I'm gone, um, you know, I'll often ask councilwoman Beaton to, um, kind of take care of my emails and I'll put her contact in, oh, if people email me, then they can email her instead. So, um, I have relied on the at-large members to cover for me when I can't answer to constituents, so... Just kind of, that is a concern, but again, I'm flexible and willing to work things out too, so I don't know. There's any feedback on that?
Thank you, councilmember Burge. Uh, further questions, comments about this amendment offered by councilmember Weld and Emanuel? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll on the language to amend.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
And that amendment passes. Uh, further conversation, questions, amendments, actions on this? Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I do kind of want to go back to, um, some of the discussion that I brought forth yesterday with regard, with regard to the title of the, um, of the section that we're adding to our handbook. Um, right now, we're calling this the resident public forum. And I think there's ways for me to like this more if it had a different name, so I'm going to put a name out there. Um, and it's consistent with the rest of our agenda for Mondays. So that, what I'm proposing is public comment, period. Um, and I think what this, so basically, I guess I'd like to make a motion to, to, uh, to change the name within the handbook, as well as within the resolution in all instances of its use, um, to, from a resident public forum to public comment, period.
Okay. Do we have a second on that? Councilmember Beaton, seconding. Uh, councilmember Gregert, do you want to speak to the importance of this amendment?
Yeah, I, uh, you know, I feel, so, at the top of our agenda, we have public hearings and then public discussions. And I think in order to add consistency and clarity, perhaps, the, the final section would be public comment, period. To explain each of those words a little bit, um, I think it is good to have the word public in there. And I think the clarification in the, the handbook and perhaps the way it's introduced by, by the, the council president or acting president, um, you know, could clarify that, that residents are who we're talking about, I guess. But we al, we also do have, um, further, you know, language in here that says that it could be someone who has business with the city or owns, owns a business in the city. Um, but I think having public in there is welcoming to folks. And then, the word comment, I think, kind of gets at the fact that whoever's coming to speak is providing one-way communication. And, um, and, you know, when we had the word forum in there, I think it, it implies more of a conversation. And then, the, the last word, period, in some ways puts an end to the discussion or that kind of bookends the end of the meeting. Um, and it, and it shows that it's limited in length as well. So, uh, so that's kind of the justification for each of those words. And I, but I think that overall, like, it's, it's good to be consistent as well, um, to call it public comment, period. So I'm happy to hear others' perspectives on, on that.
Okay. Further comments about this amendment to change the name? Councilmember Strobel?
I support that, that's a, that's a good idea. Some, some's good, some's better, I think we just replace public forum anywhere into public comment section.
Okay. Uh, further comments about the name change amendment? I see councilmember Burge.
Well, I'll just mention that I'm not picky about the name, so I was wondering, so...
Sounds good. Further comments? Seeing none on the amendment, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that amendment passes. Further action, comments by council on this item? Uh, councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. So, I want to talk a little bit about kind of what's being proposed to go into the handbook. I think that, um, our city attorney has brought forth some very timely considerations for us about how do we set criteria as a body to make ourselves neutral ahead of time before a speaker is speaking about something and ahead of time before one of us went and orders somebody, so that we're front-loading the expectations. Uh, I think that there is a high value to that. And I, I don't want to lose that in the big picture. I am a little concerned, however, about essentially multi-pages of, of, um, rules that are being, um, introduced that seem to take on a whole new tone of our handbook than we've had previously, that was put together by council members. And I don't think we'll be able to clean all of that up today. We have other things we have to get to. I still think they're really important. So, I've done some research, um, well, maybe I need to make an amendment.
Okay.
Or amend something, and then I can offer some additional comments. So, I'd like to propose an amendment that we replace the language that's been suggested thus far with the spirit of readdressing that at a later time to look at more of a comprehensive view of our handbook, but with the language that this county board uses for public comment. And I have a copy, but I can put on the screen, uh, if people would like to see it. But I, I'd like to make a, um, a motion that we replace, uh, maybe council adopts the language of public comment as utilized by the O'Clare County Board. And if I could have a second, maybe I could come up and put it on the document, if you can.
Sure. Councilmember Beaton, seconding? Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Is that, can you see that? Good enough? So, my, my intention here is to, I'll see, since we have a microphone here. My intention is to use tried and true language that we already know has been effective, that I think gets at the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish. And then, um, if we adopted this language, then I still think that we could either change our amendment or have a, I don't know, gentle lady and gentleman's agreement that we take up the recommendations on the legal side of things that would apply to the entirety of our interaction with the public versus language that's being, um, generally tied to this new idea that the council's considering. Um, for, for folks who are at home, I could just briefly share that, just a recap of what this is saying, is that it's, uh, defining what a public comment period is to provide non-members with an opportunity to present information to, in this case, the city council. It is not intended to provide an interactive debate or for cross-examination of non-members. Um, it would be up to the chair's discretion, which again is really at the body's discretion. If the chair would make a recommendation that the body disagreed with, the body can always challenge ruling of the chair. It would allow up to three minutes for a public comment time period, and then it would be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Has the same mechanisms that we've talked about already of signing up ahead of time or addressing the body. And they have to follow guidelines established by the chair, um, which would be our council rules, and it could be extended, uh, with the discretion of the chair, and again, could be the body. So I'll take my seat and be available for any questions.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor, and it's been moved by councilmember Emanuel, seconded by councilmember Beaton, to, I believe, replace those bullet points. Is it the bullet pointed part of this in, in, in the handbook language, or is it the entire thing?
We could just substitute the entire...
Okay.
The entire...
So, this would be for the entire language that is on page one twenty-seven, uh, which is proposed handbook language. Um, this is, from what I can tell, there's a number of changes that this would potentially make, but one of them is thirty minutes versus, I believe, twenty minutes, which is talked about in our, um, in the handbook proposal. Are, do councilmembers have questions or further comments, either of the mover, or seconded, or just, uh, general thoughts about this amendment, whether they support it or not? Councilmember Be...
Um, so I like, uh, um, I like this. I, there's things I like and things I don't like about this, um, so I'll just put it all out there. Um, I really like that this is consistent with the county board. Um, I have heard a lot of confusion from people who are active both on the city level and the county level and school board level, that, um, our processes are different and they don't know what to expect coming to our meeting. So I like that it's, um, uh, thirty minutes. I like, or, sorry, I like that it's consistent with the county board. Um, I like that we have a defined amount of time, um, for full public comment period. I think it'll shorten our meetings a little bit. Um, I've also found, being an active speaker at the county board, that, um, people who come to their meetings with, like, in an organized way, often will, will, um, keep their, their comments really strategically short and on different messages. And so, um, it avoids, like, a bunch of people coming, um, to say the same thing and being kind of redundant. Um, so like that, um, I, the biggest thing I don't like about this is that it's... I, the biggest thing I don't like about this is that it, it doesn't allow for staff to explain the policies that we might be talking about on Tuesday before the public are able to, to hear it, if, if that's...
But, Councilmember Beaton?
No, okay.
I don't believe in this section, in what's being proposed, that that is going to be a part of it.
Okay. So we'll still, we'd still have the, okay.
Do the movers and secuers welcome this as a friendly amendment?
Um, I guess I'm a, I'm not sure. I'm a little uncomfortable, to be honest with this, I feel like there's a lot of work that the city attorney did with what, and we've worked, um, you know, we pulled in some stuff from the school board too, that's in the original, so to be honest, yeah, I'm uncomfortable with just swapping them.
Okay.
So I feel like, and I know it's a lot of writing, and I understand to simplify, I like to simplify, but I also think it's important, is to put those parameters out there though is important too, so...
Okay. Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Acting President Worthen. Um, I'm, I'm going to, I'm very supportive of this feeling of being more accepting, which, and I could see this language being part of what the president wants to say at the beginning of that's, I, I think for our first venture, it's much easier to, to open than it is to pull it back in. And in, both in our pre-legislative session and the comments from staff has been cautious is better, and I, I guess, I, I can't, I can support what we have as, as our resolution, and I think that we can hold this as something that our experience might lead us to, but I think everything about public discourse says that cautious is a good place to be right now. So I, I appreciate, I appreciate that position, but I, I like what we have presented.
Okay. Thank you, councilmembers Bergy and Christopherson for comments. Are there further comments about this proposed amendment from Councilmember Emanuel and Beaton? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Acting President Worthen. I really like this idea of being consistent with the county board, because I think that it makes it easier for the public. At the same time, I also really appreciate the thinking and language that went into the original resolution. You know, if we're thinking of this as a tool to help council understand what's on people's minds better, I think having a way for the chair to help people contextualize their thinking in terms of citywide applicability and things that the council can actually legislate on, that ability to frame that is something that the original resolution gets to, and I think that that could potentially be really helpful in helping people to think through their concerns and helping us to get the most useful input from the government.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember McGregor.
Yeah, thank you, Acting President Worthen. I, yeah, I'm al- I'm also concerned about, you know, the work that's been done on this, that I, you know, I think that it's pretty common that any language will change between governing bodies and, you know, trying to, to strike absolute consistency is sometimes difficult and sometimes not necessary when we, when we do have different levels of government, but I also just, it's unclear, you know, it's not, this isn't, from my perspective, this isn't really an amendment that's up on the screen, it's, it's another, it's another governing body's section of their, their documents, and I, and if, and if amendment like this is going to be proposed, I'd prefer that it be written the exact way that, that we would want it. So I, I wouldn't see myself supporting this.
Well, thank you, Councilmember McGregor. I, just looking back at the resolution, the resolution is pretty open about how this, how this comment period would be structured, it doesn't get into the details, so this section in our handbook really is, lays out the details, so, I, I mean, I understand your concern, but I think that this could, this is analogous to, in my opinion, the, what, what we've laid out as potential handbook changes. Are there further comments, pro or con, on this amendment at this time? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthen. I can see where this is headed, and that's okay. It's a little cleaner than future amendments I would offer, so, so it was worth a shot. What I would say is that, in my understanding of the history of the council, the council has spent, as a body, time to write the handbook, and as I understand it, the majority of the language was written by somebody who's not a member of the council. And that, part of, part of what I see that if we adopt that language as is, I feel like we're moving a little bit away, well, moving away from really the body creating their own rules as colleagues and as peers, and I think that's really important. There's not a lot that the council just creates on their own, and so to have this, to have something not necessarily constructed by the council, I think is, it's a change in the way the body is functions, and I think there is, there's more ownership of, of the final product in the end. And I think, I think that we should, as a body, look at the handbook, I think there's a lot of opportunities for us to update it, and so really the spirit of this is, while the language may not be perfect for our city, we already know that it's tried and true, like, it functions, it gets to where we want to go in the interim period. So totally respect, if that's not where the council wants to go, I will likely offer some other amendments in a short while.
Okay. Councilmember Strobel?
Yeah, I'm not going to support this amendment, and I just wanted to speak to a little bit of what the council member just said, if I heard it correctly. Did you say that the council members didn't have, you are a city handler? Not handle?
Uh, council, I'm trying to think how to do this. Do you want to ask your, your full question, and then, and then Councilmember Emanuel can respond?
Okay, so I, my statement would be that I think that Councilmember Mitchell and I just went through our whole, whole council handbook, probably within the last year, so...
Okay. Further quest, further comments on this amendment, before we call the roll? Councilman McGregor?
Thank you, Acting President Worthen. I guess I'd like the, the amendment restated, as to what exactly we're putting on.
Sure. The amendment, as I understand it, is what you see here under rule number ten of the public comment period, that they have the county board, but it would be obviously for our city, and this would go in place of the description that we have in the handbook as proposed in this resolution. Is that correct, Councilmember?
So no changes to the resolution, so...
I don't believe so, no, the actual resolution language itself.
Uh, no.
Okay.
It's, we can clean that up later, but this is, if this passes, so...
Okay.
Just take a go and see where it goes from there.
Further discussion, seeing none, clerk, please call the roll on the, on the amendment.
Councilmember Strobel?
No.
Weld?
No.
Worthman?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Beaton?
No.
Bergy?
No.
Christopherson?
No.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
No.
And that amendment does not pass. Are there further amendments at this time regarding either the handbook language or the actual resolution itself? Um, I believe, Councilmember Emanuel, you have further amendments?
I do. Thank you.
Of course, all yours.
Thank you everybody for the conversation, I do appreciate that. Okay, let's get this little button thing.
Just a reminder again for folks, if, if you could speak up for the microphones too. Well, actually, Councilmember Emanuel, if you, if you, if I may ask other council members, as you're preparing, do other council members have just other statements or potential amendments that they want to, to say about this in the meantime? No? Yes, Councilmember Beaton?
Uh, well, I'll take the time to speak about the resolution generally. I'm really excited to see this come forward. I think that this, that a, that a public, open space, I guess I won't call it forum, because it's not really called anymore, but a, a space where our residents or the people who live in Eau Claire and near Eau Claire have an opportunity to talk to us, I, I believe that, you know, this is our number one job, to hear those comments and concerns and questions. I think, I, in, in the time that I've served, I've run into a lot of opportunities or a lot of situations with constituents who have benefited and actually are outright asking for something like this. As an active citizen in other parts of our government, I've found that these open spaces to be, for, for comment to be really helpful and welcoming, and so I'm, I'm definitely going to be supporting it, however it ends up, and I really appreciate all the work that's gone into it, and I appreciate Councilmember Bergy for leading the charge, so...
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Councilmember Emanuel, do you have your amendment? Okay.
Okay, if I may, I would move that we, on the handbook language, under the third paragraph that starts with speakers during the public comment period session shall follow, and I'd like to strike out the words of decorum and just leave it as rules of the city council, where this occurs two times here in this paragraph. And if I can, if I had a second, or I can speak to my, the rationale for that.
Okay. We have a second, by Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Emanuel?
Um, so I think the, to me, I'm not really sure if we've defined as a body what rules of decorum mean. I think we've talked about general rules of civility and listening to one another. To me, I think decorum starts to get into a space where it's, it seems, it does not seem as a welcoming word as a spirit of what I think we're trying to achieve here. And I know Councilmember Anderson is a lady of language, so maybe you will have some additional perspectives. I think it still gets at the same spirit of following the rules. I guess, I feel like the word decorum is just stuffy, and I think it's not necessary and it still enforces what we're trying to enforce here.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Emanuel. Would anyone else, Councilmember Anderson or any others, like to speak to this amendment on the floor? Councilmember Anderson?
Uh, yeah, I would support any amendments to either change or network of this word decorum. I think that decorum as a concept, especially if it's kind of ill-defined, can be interpreted in a lot of broad ways, and, I mean, it's one of the most obvious in the way that people think of manners and languageings as relating to class, and that can come over their people, so I think that we should support it.
Okay. Further discussion about removing the word decorum and making the, the amendments that Councilmember Emanuel has proposed? Councilmember Strobel?
Decorum seems like a good word to me, I don't know, just give it up to behavior and keeping a good taste in propriety, I don't know.
Sure.
I might be meant one of the...
Okay. Councilmember Strobel, thank you for your comment. Are there further comments about this amendment? Councilmember McGregor?
Thank you, Acting President Worthen. I guess I'd like the, the amendment restated again, please.
Okay. Councilmember Emanuel?
Okay. So this amendment would strike out in the, in that first sentence in the paragraph that starts with speakers during the public comment period shall follow all rules, strike of decorum, so it reads of rules of this city council and rulings of the chair, including a decision to terminate and remarks if the speaker does not adhere to the rules, strike of decorum, or the further rules of the public comment period. So it strikes out of decorum two times.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Emanuel, for restating the amendment. Are there further comments on this? Councilmember Bergy?
I'll just say that, I think it takes away, removing that word decorum doesn't take away the essence of the, what's, what I'm proposing, so I would be okay with taking away that word.
Okay. Any further comments, seeing none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
No. And that amendment passes. We are then open again for further comments, or Councilmember Emanuel, if you have another amendment? Seems like you do? No?
Bless you all. I think we're good. I actually, I did have another one on public comment, the language around that, but that was taken care of, so...
Okay.
I can, if I, since I'm being allowed enough at this moment, I, I think this is so important that this body is doing this. It seems maybe for some that this is a, a big deal, and for others it might be finally, and I think it's really important that we do this, and as with anything that's new, we'll, we'll work it out, you know, there's hiccups along the way, we'll work it out, and I think the spirit is making ourselves available, we don't know what we're going to learn, and we have some proactive mechanisms to help with any, any instability that may occur, and really the spirit is to open, open up the government that belongs to the people who live here.
Thank you, Councilmember Emanuel. Any further question, or further comments on this? I don't see any. Councilmember McGregor?
Thank you, Acting President Worthen. I do, you know, certainly really appreciate this going forward to this point and having staff help us through it. It's been, I'm sure, I'm sure an adventure for the council members who have worked through that as well. I think that one of the most exciting things that this does, just trying to add some additional justification, is to say that, you know, that there's sometimes a, a level of frustration or maybe a, a level of confusion about what ends up having a public hearing versus a public discussion versus not showing up at all on a Monday agenda, and that's something that, you know, I think new council members have to work through, but also the public constantly is unaware of exactly what triggers a public hearing versus a public discussion, and I, I figure that this is one way to give people a space to, to speak to the Tuesday items, but as well as items that maybe they thought were going to be on the agenda but aren't, are just things that they want to put out there in the community for consideration, so I think this, this should actually help us with some of the confusion that may be out there that is very understandable, as to, as to why, I mean, I, I can't say I've even figured out completely what, what triggers a public hearing versus public discussion, so, so I think it, it's a really good change that is sort of a catch-all for people that want to say something. So I, and as someone who, who's attended, you know, as a citizen, so many public discussions or, or public hearings over the years, many dozens, like, I, I don't necessarily see this, you know, expanding the total number of people that come in and speak, but I think having that option there is, is, is really a big deal, so, so I'll be supportive.
Thank you, Councilmember McGregor. Further comments, Councilmember Strobel?
I'm sort of referring to this as open mic Monday. I do think it's a, a well-intentioned effort. We need to get more citizen input as a council, who, who wouldn't support that? I think I'm in a unique situation to express my doubts about the soundness of the decision. Having served in a neighborhood steering committee for fourteen years, including as a VP and the president, I've always been an advocate for citizen input, and knowing what it's like to be on the other side of the microphone. And knowing what it's like to be on the other side of the microphone. However, this resolution has so many problems for me that I can't support it. And no one in the, in the work session, staff expressed considerable objections about this. I also reached out to eight council members, and none of them thought it was a good idea nor did they think it was necessary. I've actually been on the council for almost six years, and I have not gotten these constituent concerns expressed by the members. The city government is, is different than the county and the school board. And in fact, we have a means to have public hearings every two weeks, which we, we do and they rarely do. The citizens have more ways now than ever to communicate and express their concerns, and there are proper ways to address it. We have phone, snail mail, email, and we have social media now. There are five district representatives, six at-large city council members, and of course, there's City Hall. There's also neighborhood associations and public commission meetings as well. If a council member gets a concern, they can forward them to staff for an answer, they can follow up themselves, and if the item has merit, they're allowed to put it on a public hearing agenda. It's, it's that easy. I think this is trying to address a problem that does not exist. To add twenty minutes or more to already lengthy meeting for items which have no feedback will potentially lead to false perceptions, open us up to legal issues, is not something that I can support. I think the purpose of notice meetings is to allow equal notice and time to talk. This allows both sides of an issue and affected parties to have a voice. It allows the council and staff time for preparation and the ability to look at both sides of an issue. I think this one will, will open up a can of worms. I think it's going to be extremely unproductive, and the most likely use of this time will be for activists and special interests to come in large numbers to express their viewpoints, which none of us will be able to address or ask questions. And guess what, they can come back every two weeks. So I'm, I'm affirmed knowing this, what I consider an unnecessary resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Strobel. Further comments on this? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emmanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Strobel.
No.
Weld.
Aye. And that passes. We move then to our ordinances for action. Item number twenty-three is an ordinance amending table nine of the city code of ordinances entitled Parking During Specified Hours by amending time restrictions on Briggs Avenue. Do council members have further clarifying questions of Mr. Solberg or city staff at this time? On this issue, we had a pretty lengthy discussion on it, seeing none. Then, on a motion by Councilmember Emmanuel, seconded by Councilmember Weld, this ordinance regarding parking on Briggs Avenue has been moved. Is there discussion? Councilmember Emmanuel.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Just want to say thank you to staff to allow the process to have a little bit more time. I think I've already heard from one of the residents that was leading this effort that this was a really good solution, and so I just want to say thank you. I know it took a little, maybe more than a little extra work, and it's paid off, and I really thank you.
Thank you for that comment. Councilmember Strobel, did you have a comment on this as well? Okay. Are there any further comments before we vote on this change to parking on Briggs Avenue? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emmanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye. And that ordinance passes. We move to item number twenty-four, which is an ordinance amending chapter six point one four entitled Keeping of Honeybees of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Eau Claire. Last night, we had a discussion on this item as well. Are there any further clarifying questions that council members may have before we move it? Seeing none. Then a motion by Councilmember Beaton, seconded by Councilmember McGregor. This ordinance has been moved. Is there discussion? Councilmember Weld.
Thank you, Acting President. I have some concerns. And, and maybe I should have asked a clarifying question prior to opening it up, but I think from a little bit of discussion I've had with, with other council members, it sounds like this started with, with a, with a request by CBTC to allow them in an area to, to, to keep their bees. And I think that the Board of Health, the County Board have helped, put a lot of time and work into that portion of it. Since then, we've, you know, we've amended or it's been added to in the other two areas. And so I, I just, I, I just, you know, I, I haven't prepared anything as far as an amendment, but at some point, I, I want to have a discussion about whether or not we, we move forward to just part two of this resolution. And then table part one and three, until we can have some more time to, to hammer it out. I'll just go through my concerns. I, you know, and again, I'm, I'm not opposed to keeping a bees in, in the city. I, I have no problem with that, but I really struggle with it becoming a, put in our lap in regards to whether or not people are going to be able to, to have more or less what, what's being stated is that, in the event that there's an objection, it will come before us to make the decision whether or not that neighbor has to, to be okay with the keeper of bees next door or not. And I don't think that's our place as, as council members to, to make that decision in the past. I think it's worked well with the eighty percent and within so many feet. Because at least it's gotten neighbors talking and working together and coming to, you know, a conclusion that, that is in the best interest of the neighborhood. And my two experiences being on the selling side, it's, it's worked out well. I'd rather see that be the direction we go with this versus it just more or less is being stated that if you're within fifty feet, you can object, but it's up to a, you know, a subjective council on whether or not it'll be approved or, or it isn't. I'm not comfortable with that part of it. So I have concerns about the change from property to dwelling and hive. I think for staff's purposes and, you know, I guess even for consistency throughout the neighborhoods. I liked it before when it was, you know, property to property and not hive to dwelling. I think that, you know, I would really have to go through the tape measure now and, and, and measure, you know, where the hive is and where the home is. And I, I think that's going to make it more cumbersome and, and more time-consuming. The notification, we've gone from a hundred feet, and we're staying at a hundred feet. But, and will we send out two letters? I mean, if you're fifty-one feet, between fifty-one feet and a hundred feet, you'll get one letter that says, just announcing that there'll be bees, but it doesn't give you any recourse or, or a right to object. And then there'll be a second letter for everyone from zero to fifty feet that will then have a letter that states they do have recourse. Again, confusing to me and I think to the neighborhoods. I, I think that the biggest part of this is, is what, what it puts, puts before us and the decisions we have to make as a body that really is, I, I don't see how we have any right to decide what, we talk about quality of life and, you know, and what one person feels is, is acceptable. You know, why are we the ones that say it is or it isn't? It, it should be amongst them that, that decide that. And so I guess I want to take that part of it out. That's why I keep going back and forth and maybe just focus on number two, and then let's all sit down and work out something more that, that we can work with. But I'll leave it at that for now and we'll let other people speak.
Okay. I'll, I'd like to respond on, on a few things, because I was involved in the, the items that, the changes that you've seen in front of you. And I was also, in full disclosure, one of the authors of this ordinance in the first place. And so, just first of all, on the, the way that this came about was that when we passed this ordinance originally, we actually wanted to get something passed but knew that we were going to revisit a few of these items, including educational facilities and including the potential of having beekeeping in public parks, in public spaces, if it was done correctly. We even tried to potentially do something on the floor with some language, but it was just too difficult to do. And we said, we'll come back to that at a later point. When the technical college approached and said, we would like to see some modifications to this because of a class that's going to be teaching beekeeping, that seemed like the perfect opportunity to take some of these other changes that we had put off three years ago and to bring them back for consideration. So these were not tacked on in any sense. I was a part of the meetings with, with the Health Department and the stakeholders from the Chippewa Valley Beekeepers that came together to look at these from the very beginning. And the, and the changes regarding the setbacks, I'll just, I'll talk about. The, 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 I mean, I think first of all, the measuring, the idea around measuring, that already happens when you, when you apply for a, to, to keep bees. The inspectors are out there and they're measuring your, to, to make sure that you got the right distance to a barrier, that it's got enough setback and et cetera. Those are all things that already happen. They also have a way of looking at a map to see how far the neighbors are. They knew right away who was within, within a hundred feet of my own property to say, you know, you've got this thing or you don't. So that's something that they already do. I don't think there's an, an extra amount that's too cumbersome. I think the other thing on this is, Councilmember Weld, we just had a discussion around, you know, neighbors who wanted a repaving of their alley and two other neighbors who didn't want it. And I, I can guarantee that that's a conversation that had been happening probably between those neighbors for, for probably many months, if not years, that we helped, hopefully helped to resolve. And so I think that we, we, we can bring a perspective of our neighborhoods, our backgrounds, our communities to try to make a decision. What this does specifically is it really says, if you have a health issue and your neighbor wants to get bees, but you say there's, there's no way because of my health concerns that I could have a neighbor that keeps bees, it gives that recourse, and that's important. It also doesn't completely go away for, from, it doesn't say we're going to give full property rights. Anyone can do what they want with their own property. It doesn't go fully in that direction either. It says, we will open up that conversation through notification. So neighbors have a chance to know that you're going to be keeping bees, and if they want to object, they can. So I think it strikes a balance in terms of both creating that conversation and providing a place where neighbors can object. But it doesn't go fully in the direction of neighbors saying no or the person who wants to keep bees having full right over their own property. So those are, if I could just say again, those are kind of the, the changes. But there's also, I want to say, should not be a perception that these were just tacked on, but these were actually changes that had been considered even three years ago when we first passed it. Other council members that wish to comment, Councilmember Strobel?
I have a, I have a lot of concerns about the two. You know, I supported both the last two of the ordinances, and we, we actually just did a change. I'm not quite.
Yeah, you're right.
I'm not quite sure.
You're correct.
We did one probably seven months ago, maybe. We just changed the B ordinance. And now we're, now we're changing again. To me, I mean, some of the stuff I'm okay with, but, but some of it goes a lot, a lot further than I would like to see it go. You know, where it's taking away the rights of other property owners and, and really giving the bee owners all kinds of, all kinds of rights. And I mean, it, you know, besides the G there, which I have an amendment for if we get that way, there's also my concern about the public parks. I mean, the, I'm hearing from citizens that they're, they don't want necessarily bees in public parks. Then I, then I go to the acreage requirements there and how many hives that could be there. And there's a, there's a big concern about how many hives would actually be in the parks as well. And would they be owned by one person or, you know? We talked about a hobbyist having a couple hives and, you know, just, just using the honey and the wax and stuff like that. But you start getting up there in the twenty, thirty hives, you're talking about a commercial bee operation. And I don't think we necessarily let other businesses use our city parks on a permanent basis for that. So I, I'd prefer to keep it as a hobbyist. And the other thing I didn't see in the park thing is, what if we get public complaints about the, the beehives in the park? There wasn't really no written remedy as to how we would solve that issue. So there's a lot of changes in this. And I guess we could go through it all now or we could do a little work session on it or, or something. But it just doesn't seem to me like we had the, the feedback on it for the extent of the changes that we're putting forth.
Okay. I'll follow up on, on at least one of those. In terms of the public park, you'll notice in here that it talks about how the, how a beekeeping operation would be installed and how it would be safe to be done in a public park if, if this comes up. There's also, because it is a public park, it gives discretion to our, our, I believe it's our Parks and Record Community Services Director. And so the notification is different. So if you look at like a place like Forest Street Community Garden, where, where a, a beehive would fit well, it would be up to the Community Services Director to decide, is that a good location? Is it being built properly and safely? Are they following all the regulations? So it doesn't have, it doesn't have neighbor input in the same way because it's, it's in a different space. But I guess that's sort of, that's how it's addressed. Councilmembers, are there further comments or, or amendments? Does anyone want to propose an amendment? Further discussion, Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Acting President. Just, you know, I guess, I think when somebody buys a house and they see it's adjacent to or alongside an alley or in front of an alley, I think they understand going forward, as long as they own that house, they'll have an alley next to them that they'll have to address at some point. But they know going in that it's always going to be there, and it's always going to be a part of their life. You know, if you buy a home and somebody moves in next door and, and they wish to keep bees, and you don't really, you know, as a property owner, you don't, maybe you just don't understand enough about bees and whether or not it's safe. You know, so there's just a lot of people that aren't, that don't have the understanding as much as people that do it, obviously. And so I, I think there isn't, it's not as cut and dried as, as having an alley or not. I think they don't have a choice who moves next door and, and the likes and hobbies that that person takes on. So I, I, I think to be consistent, again, I think there has to be some involvement with the community and the community has to make the decision for the neighborhoods, I should say, or the neighbors.
Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I, I don't have enough understanding to feel like I could vote this evening on this particular item. These are really excellent points that are brought up. I'm not exactly against it, but I, I don't feel like I would be giving a thoughtful vote tonight. I'd like to have an opportunity to research it a little bit more, understand questions that I didn't even know I had before this conversation. Is it appropriate to move for this to be postponed?
I think if I could just make a recommendation, that we might include the provisions regarding the technical college in the ordinance and maybe visit these other sections later. If that, because that's part of the timing of this, of this ordinance. If council might, I'll, I'll just open that up to a question, but maybe we, we ax the, the public parks part of it and the, and the setback, or sorry, the, the notifications of property owners. It's just an idea. Councilmember Strobel.
Is it, is it time-sensitive for the, the technical college? Because it's my understanding that, that the hives and stuff don't, you know, start operating most of spring.
City attorney.
They're a year-round operation or can be, and they had been located there. What their current status is, I'm. They're a year-round operation or can be, and they had been located there. What their current status is, I'm not familiar, but it was an ongoing issue and I think one best to resolve sooner than later. Do you have information?
It's ongoing, just happened.
Existing apiaries would be a year-round operation. Typically, we see new startups in the late winter, spring. Some of that answers the question.
But the, okay. In terms of CBTC?
CBT, CBTTC's course is typically a summer offered course, so they would be starting again next spring.
Are the apiaries still present, do you know, or did they move the colonies out?
Yeah, they are not there at this moment. The sites are but not operating.
Okay, well, knowing that, I mean, if someone wants to make a motion to postpone this ordinance for consideration, councilmember Strobel? Is there a second to postpone?
Second.
Councilmember Kristofferson, discussion on the motion? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman, and I guess my question is maybe if I may ask representative from staff just to see if there's any other time-sensitive issues that maybe we ought to consider in light of potentially postponing this, just to make sure we're not accidentally forgetting something.
Can you think of anything? See, imagine?
So, I guess I'm not quite clear on the request.
Maybe I can redirect it. If the, if Acting President Worthman would allow me to perhaps ask the Public Health Director or the Legal Department or Mr. Steinbach if there's any other time-sensitive considerations that we need to keep in mind.
No, I can. We know what we know and what was said, and I mean, I'm looking back, and so we don't, we don't know if there's any other factors that would make it time-sensitive other than what was presented.
Okay, councilmember Strobel, do you have a date that you would like to postpone to?
Okay, so when we postpone, we usually postpone to a date certain and maybe with some direction as to how we're going to address some of these things, and I don't really have that, but some of these things we have it.
I'll, do councilmembers want to hold a pre-legislative session on this? Or some other? I'll, I'm just kind of trying to get some feedback if that's the way to go. I, I mean, part, councilmember Beaton, I'll defer to you.
Well, I'll just say for myself, I feel like I am comfortable voting today, and so I definitely wouldn't find a legislative session helpful for myself, but we'll vote to postpone if that's going to make other members comfortable. I think that we can work through this without a legislative session.
Okay. I'm of the same thinking, but councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Acting President. I guess maybe we can hear from some of the colleagues who feel like they need some more information. I think, I don't think we're wondering about if we should be voting on this. I think it's really about getting that information. So I wonder if we ought to think about having a, I think it's called a study session that's limited in time. It's timed down to twenty minutes. It often will happen on a Monday night. And one example I'll give is, we've had a study session on signs, all about signs, where to place them, all that kind of stuff. And it was really helpful to then make some decisions about signs and where to place them in their city. So just as far as a mechanism goes, does it seem that perhaps having some dedicated time to better understand the topic would be helpful? If not, that's okay. Just really, what do you think would be helpful?
Councilmember Strobel?
I would support that, and we have some expert here or whatever to answer our questions in some of these details. And I think if councilmembers have specific questions on all this, it'd be nice if they could potentially get them in ahead of time so that those could be addressed right away, and then it would give us that twenty minutes to have a little back and forth. I would be agreeable.
Okay, that sounds like a good plan. Should we postpone this to a time certain of January, maybe? Does that seem like a good timetable? Second meeting in January? Okay, second meeting in January with the hope being that we'd have a study session sometime before that, maybe the first meeting of January. Okay, this has been moved by councilmember Strobel and seconded by councilmember Kristofferson, my apologies. Clerk, please, is there any further comments? Clerk, please call and roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
And that has been postponed. We move then to our final ordinance for action, which is an ordinance amending section ten forty-four oh seven oh, entitled Late Payment Penalties of the City Code of Ordinances Related to Penalties for Traffic Violations. Do councilmembers have questions for Ms. Stronberger or any other clarifications at this time, the presentation last night? Seeing none, then on a motion by councilmember Beaton, seconded by councilmember Gregert, ordinance regarding late payment penalties has been moved. Is there discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call and roll.
Councilmember Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
And that ordinance passes. We're then on to our ordinances for introduction. The first one is ordinance number, sorry, is item number twenty-six, Pay Plan and Practices. This is an ordinance amending City of Eau Claire Pay Plan and Practices. Is there any desire at this time to suspend the rules and move this item for action? I see no such desire. We then move to ordinance regarding sewer service charges, sewage service charges. Item number twenty-seven listed in the ordinances for introduction is an ordinance amending chapter fifteen point oh four of the city code of ordinances entitled Sewage Service Charges to Increase the Sewer Usage Charges as proposed in the two thousand and nineteen budget. Is there any wish or desire to take up this ordinance at this time? I see no desire by council to suspend the rules. We move then to an annexation. Item number twenty-eight is an ordinance in accordance with the section sixty-six point oh two seventeen of the Wisconsin statutes annexing to the City of Eau Claire and particularly to the sixth assessment ward, fourth aldermanic district being a part of the southeast quarter, the northeast quarter of section twenty-four twenty-seven ten, Town of Union, Eau Claire County, as shown in planning drawing number eighteen four A. Is there a desire of the council to move this annexation for action at this time? See no desire to suspend the rules and move that annexation. We move then to item number twenty-nine, which is aldermanic districts. This is a charter ordinance relating to the City of Eau Claire and a pre-apportionment of the aldermanic districts of the City of Eau Claire, amending them. Is there a desire by council to suspend the rules and move this aldermanic districts item? I see no such desire. We will then move to our last ordinance for introduction, which is number thirty. This is Parks and Public Grounds. It's an ordinance amending chapter nine point seven six, entitled Parks and Public Grounds of the City of Eau Claire ordinances. Does council want to suspend the rules and take up this item at this time? I see no such desire. We move then to our announcements by city manager or by city council.
Thank you, Acting Council President Worthman. I am here to plead with you tonight. We have a board review next Monday, and it's really, really important that we have six people signed up. And at this point, we only have five people signed up between eight and ten, and nobody after, I mean, and then only four after ten. And in the afternoon of Monday, we only have four. Ideally, we should be prepared to have the board review for three days, on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. The other days get even skimpier with three and four on some of the other periods. So, we could really use you to, you know, carefully look at your calendars and if at all possible, you know, let Kathy know if you're able to contribute some time on Monday, the twenty-ninth. We have two time slots from eight to noon, and the other one is from one to five. So if you could let us know if you have availability on that, that would be really, really helpful. Second item I would have is, there was discussion some time back about trying to do some more things together and doing tours and taking some opportunities to get to know the city and the operations a little bit better. And so we've scheduled on November first, from eleven thirty to one, a tour of the waste for treatment plant. And we're going to try some different times to see if lunch hours or, you know, after, after regular hours, you know, work a little bit better. It's a good lunch spot. It's a great lunch spot, so. Oh, what? Was it the water plant? That would be a better one. Oh, okay. Yeah, I thought it was the waste for treatment plant, I'm sorry. So we're doing it at the water plant. So, I know we have some that is out on River View Drive, and you're right, that'll be a little bit better in appealing their lunch hour, so. Anyway, from eleven thirty-one on November first, so that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you, City Manager Peters. Is there any announcements by council at this time? Seeing none, then on a motion by councilmember Bergy, seconded by councilmember Kristofferson, this meeting is adjourned. Do a work session. Do a work session.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the City of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call seven one five eight three nine four nine one two, or TDD seven one five eight three nine one six eight nine, or write Eau Claire City Clerk, P O Box five one four eight, Eau Claire, Wisconsin, five four seven zero two dash five one four eight. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at seven one five eight three nine five zero six seven or online at valleymediaworks.org.